This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I would like to call the City of Escalon Planning Commission meeting of December 13th, 2022 to order. Would you please join us in a flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, democratic, representative, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioners Castellanos.
Yep.
Willis.
Here.
Ingle.
Here.
Vice Chair Sarkozy.
Here.
Chair Strowman.
Here.
Please note that all cell phones, pagers, or similar devices need to be set on silent or vibrate mode, or turned off unless you're an on-duty emergency responder. Our first item on the agenda is a consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and will be approved with one motion. The first item is to approve the minutes from the meeting of November 15th, 2022. Do we have any comments? Or do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes from November 15th.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Chair Strowman.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, staff would like to request that we move items number four and five up before the public hearing, which is the nomination of chair and vice chair.
Okay.
As we'll have a planning commissioner that will be recusing himself from the next two items due to the proximity of their property. And so let me just get that going.
Okay. So, under administrative matters, item number four, nominate and select commission chair for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
So as everyone may be aware, Chair Strowman and Commissioner Ingle have been elected to the seats of the city council, and they will administer their oath of offices next Monday, December 19th. And so that will temporarily leave us with a planning commission of three until we put out for application and take an application and conduct interviews. And so for your next meeting, we want to make sure we have a chair and vice chair in place so that you guys are able to move forward and we don't run into any hiccups, besides only having the three members at that time. So, thank you very much.
So, can I ask a question on this item?
Sure.
And should Commissioner Ingle and myself excuse ourselves or abstain from voting on this? Or how should that work?
No, you don't have to. It's not a conflict in the traditional sense because you're, you know, well able to speak on the qualifications of your fellow commissioners, and all you're doing is selecting your successors. So, you can participate in the discussion. And the way that I would suggest doing it is having a brief discussion, seeing if anybody wants it, doesn't want it, so it sort of clears the field a little bit if possible. And then, you know, you can take multiple motions if there are multiple nominations, and then take them each in turn, or if there's just one nomination for each position, we can do it that way.
Any discussion. Let's start with you, Commissioner Castellanos.
To discuss.
Chair.
I think this gentleman here should be the chair for 2223.
Is that a motion or a discussion?
I think he is well qualified to run this committee. So it's a discussion. Anybody else disagree?
Barb?
That's a nomination. I'll second.
It'll be a nomination.
Okay, so we have a nomination and a second for Vice Chair Sarkozy to be the commission chair for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Do we have a second? Are we have a second? All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so next item is nominate and select commission vice chair for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Any comments? Let's start at this end.
Well, Barb, you just finished chair. Steve, how do you feel about being vice chair?
Do I have a choice?
You can say you don't want to do that yet.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, is that a nomination?
Unless there's any opposition. Barb, you good with that?
I'm good with that. I'll second the nomination.
All right, so we have a nomination and a second for Steve Castellanos for the Planning Commission Vice Chair position for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Congratulations, future Vice Chair Castellanos.
Thank you.
Now, one thing to note, as staff mentioned, for all of you in attendance and on the call, with Commissioner Ingle and myself moving on to the city council, there will be two spots available on the planning commission. So probably after the first of the year, you will see some notification from city staff. Please feel free to apply for those positions. They're open to any City of Escalon residents, and it's always good to get new fresh ideas on the planning commission. So, thank you.
We'll also have an opening coming forth on the Recreation Commission as well. So we'll have three seats open, two on the planning commission, one on the RICS commission.
Awesome. So feel free to apply, get involved, get involved in the future of Escalon. All right. Now, first item is public hearing. Application 22-773, site and architecture and conditional use permit, southeast corner of McHenry Avenue and Countrywood Lane, Escalon APN 22-320-230-000.
Chair, I would, due to my property proximity to this, this agenda item, I'll need to excuse myself for this and number three as well.
Sounds good. Well, thanks for showing up for five minutes, taking on a chair job. Just for the general public, and before we get into the staff report, I wish to disclose that last week, when, or late last week, on Friday, when the agenda was published, I asked staff to pose a number of questions to the applicant. Those questions were answered to the planning commission. They are as part of the public record, so the general public has those same questions. This was intended for me to gather all the information. I mean, it's a lot of information to read in this packet. And so, but those questions have no bearing on, they didn't give me a perceived notion, or won't bias my decision, or won't prevent me from making a fair and impartial decision. I just want the general public to know that I reached out to staff to ask the applicant some questions ahead of time. And everybody, did everybody receive a copy of those questions?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, they are attached in the back of your agendas.
So.
And if you didn't get an agenda, they're available on the desk in the lobby.
So my questions, if you have them, my questions that I asked were in black. The questions in, or the responses in red were the responses from the applicant. And then there was some additional input that was needed on some of those from the city engineer, and the city engineer's comments are in blue. So I think everybody has a copy of them, should be in the back. All right.
Thank you, Chair. So item number two on the agenda tonight, and the city received a site and architecture and conditionally use permit application to develop a 4,409 square foot McDonald's quick serve restaurant on the 1.9 acre commercial parcel at the southeast corner of McHenry Avenue and Countrywood Lane. The proposed development would occupy 1.24 acres of the total 1.9 acre lot. The property owner has separately filed for a tentative parcel map. That's the next item on the agenda, project 22772, to split the existing lot into proposed parcel one, which McDonald's is requesting to develop, and then remaining proposed parcel two. This site is currently vacant, has a general plan, land use designation of commercial, and it's zoned C2 community commercial. The applicant has indicated that this restaurant would most likely not be open 24 hours a day, like a highway location would be. However, restaurant hours are typically determined by the franchisee who's not yet been selected. Some statistics on the project, and the proposed lot size is 1.24 acres, and in the C2 zone, there is no minimum lot size required. The setbacks to the building, to the property line are listed below. There is some information in the staff report that is going to be a little bit different than proposed. In that additional information after publication, there is a revised site plan. And so the staff report was written to the original site plan. So I've gone through and updated some data that I'll give you verbally. The east setback to the building, and let me go over here. And I'm going to zoom in for you. In the original site plan, the one that's published in the agenda, there is additional parking spaces along this exit corridor here. After the agenda was published, the applicant had a revised site plan, which shortened the length of the lot. They eliminated those parking spaces and moved the line over. And so this, from this building east to the property line, is a little bit shorter because those parking stalls were removed. So parcel one had shrunk a little bit. Proposed parcel two, the remainder increased a little bit.
What's, how many feet short? What's the difference?
Parking spaces are about 19 feet. I think it's just a little bit less than that, so probably 15 to 19 feet shorter.
Is the applicant?
The applicant's in the audience, so during public comment, you could ask that.
Okay.
And so one, one project statistic that changed was that east side setback. Let me go back over here, this one. Parking, because they eliminated those parking spaces on the revised site plan, it's going to be 45 parking spaces. Only 18 were required. The building height is going to be about 20 feet tall, which is less than the 75 that is allowed in the C2 zone. Building mass, 4,409 square feet. The C2 allows up to 40,000 square feet. Landscaping, they're proposing about 18, 18 and a half percent of the lot be landscaped, and the C2 minimum is 10%. As I mentioned, this project consists of constructing a new McDonald's quick serve restaurant with drive-through on the new proposed lot. The restaurant pad will be located to the northwest. I'm going to switch over to the site plan. That might be more helpful. Parking lot will be located, oh, the restaurant pad will be located toward the northwest corner of the lot. The parking lot will be located on the south sides of the building. And landscaping's provided throughout the site. The interior of the restaurant will feature a dining area with seating for approximately 52 patrons, service counter, kitchen area, drive-through payment pickup windows, and restrooms. Vehicle access to the site is available off of McHenry Avenue and Countrywood Lane. The drive-through entrance begins on the east side of the building, circles through north and west sides of the building, and exits closest to McHenry Avenue. The drive-through features two queuing lanes to accommodate the anticipated demand from the restaurant. Entering the queue from the south, patrons reach a menu board on the east side of the building. Oning structures will shelter the menu boards and drive-through ordering areas. After placing orders, the queuing lanes converge. A pay window and an order pickup window are on the north side of the building. The drive-through configuration maximizes capacity of the drive-through facility, minimizing the number of cars lining up in the adjacent parking lot. The design of the building will provide a new accessible path of travel from McHenry to the front of the building. Site lighting is provided along the building walls, as well as, and on a revised, on a photometric plan that we received, this is in your additional documents at the back of the agenda, there are eight proposed site lights. I want that one. And this says the applicant will be required to submit a photometric analysis. They did provide a draft. It will get reviewed again at final building permits of middle. Parking and traffic restaurant, the required number of parking spaces for a restaurant is based on the number of seats within the restaurant. Based on the proposed seating plan, there'll be 52 interior seats. One parking space is required for every three seats, so 18 onsite parking spaces are required. Applicant has provided 45 parking spaces. Of the 45 provided parking spaces, two will be ADA stalls located at the front entrance of the building. Eight are EV capable, EV charging capable stalls, and nine are designated for low emitting, fuel efficient, or carpool vehicles. The parking stalls proposed are the typical size, nine feet by 19 feet in size. The site also provides bike lockers, as well as a U-rack on the west side of the building, which are required to accommodate at least six bicycles. Primary access to the site is from McHenry Avenue, which is a county designated highway, and city designated arterial street that consists of four lanes and a center two-way turn lane. McHenry Avenue has an approximate capacity of 30,000 vehicles a day. The applicant estimates approximately 776 vehicle trips per day, which accounts for less than 3% of McHenry's total capacity. A secondary ingress egress is provided off Countrywood Lane, which is a two-lane collector street with an approximate capacity of 2,000 vehicles per day. Typically, drivers will elect to use the driveway with the least amount of congestion, which in most cases will be McHenry Avenue. The C2 zone requires a minimum 10% of the net lot be landscaped. The proposed site proposes 18% landscaping. It contains a mixture of trees, shrubs, ground cover. Landscape plan will be required to conform to state of California MLO requirement, which is low water usage. Upon commercial development of the north side of Countrywood Lane, so this is when O'Reilly's Auto Parts developed that corner, the sidewalk trees were removed, and they were replaced with concrete to create the required eight-foot wide sidewalks that front commercial developments. Additionally, in an effort to alleviate potential damage to sidewalks from tree roots, community development and public works departments have been emphasizing that we reduce trees in the sidewalk, and instead emphasize the number of trees planted in the street frontage landscaping of new commercial development. Let me go. So when O'Reilly's developed over here, these trees that are in the sidewalk on this side were also located on the other side. The trees were removed, and that was filled in with concrete to make an eight-foot sidewalk. The original plan was the same would be done to the other side to maintain eight-foot sidewalks along commercial. That's a development standard in the municipal code. However, because of the residential across the street, the planning commission does have the option to retain these street trees in the sidewalk, in addition to the trees that are going to be planted in the commercial landscaping strip here to provide additional screening to anyone across the street off of Countrywood Lane. So that, that would be something to discuss, whether to keep the street trees or have them removed and install the eight-foot sidewalk. Architecture of the proposed building will be compatible with nearby buildings along McHenry Avenue, characterized by a rectangular footprint, flat roof, and large windows along McHenry Avenue and the southern elevation. The store takes on a contemporary design. The one-story building stands approximately 20 feet tall, minimizing visual impact to surrounding areas. Generally, generally, the building's rectangular in shape. Some offset features to add articulation. Onings will be provided above most windows and doors and the drive-through windows. Color scheme primarily includes a combination of lighter and darker grays, accents of bronze, white, and yellow. Exterior building materials use a combination of stucco, lapsiding, and aluminum accents and finishes. A trashcan will be required along the exterior front of the building. Applicant has indicated signage will be submitted by a sign company as a deferred submittal. If it meets the municipal code, then it's processed at staff level. If it needs enhanced signage, then it would come before planning commission at a later date. This project qualifies for Class 3 and Class 32 exemption according to the California Environmental Quality Act. Class 3 applies to new construction of small structures, which in urban areas, which is developed cities, a building not exceeding 10,000 square feet, which this is 4,409. And a Class 32 exemption applies to infill developments, project sites, no less than five, or less than five acres. Therefore, staff recommends planning commission determine the project to be exempt from CEQA. Regards to this project, if planning commission warrants it to be approved, it needs site and architecture approval, which is Escalon Municipal Code Section 17.54020. Planning commission would need to make the following findings to approve the application that the user activities allowed use within the zoning district of the project site. And according to Escalon Municipal Code, fast food restaurants are allowed in the C2 zone with an approved conditional use permit from the planning commission. But the site plan's consistent with the provisions set forth in the chapter, the general plan, other plans and policies adopted by the city council, and the site plan, which is attached, is consistent with the requirements of the zoning code and general plan. And building, architecture, and site design, staffs determine that the elements are met. Building architecture is sufficiently varied in design. It uses a variety of building materials, colors, and textures, as shown on the plans. Architecture follows a design theme that it blends in with the surrounding uses, and while still providing enough distinctive design, it's recognizable. Architecture is consistent with the plans and policies adopted by the city council. City of Escalon Engineering and Planning Departments, as well as the Escalon Consolidated Fire Department, have reviewed the site plan, both the original and the revised, and they find that the site plan, as conditioned with the conditions of approval, meet the findings required above, and is consistent with the general plan. Conditional use permits required for fast food restaurants. To approve the conditional use permit, planning commission would make the findings for municipal code 17.56.030. Construction of the restaurant will develop a vacant infill lot, and the city will collect development impact fees on the building permit that offset city costs, increase property tax revenue based on property sales price and improvement value, as well as increase sales tax revenue benefiting the general fund. City staffs reviewed the site and architecture and conditional use permit application, finds that the project's in conformance with the findings required for the municipal code, zoning code, and general plan. Public outreach performed for the project on November 22nd, every property owner on the latest assessor's record was mailed the notice of public hearing if they lived within 1,200 feet of the subject site. The city posted the same notice on the city website and the city Facebook page on November 22nd. On November 23rd, 2022, the notice of public hearing appeared in the Escalon Times newspaper, and sign boards were posted on the property by the applicant on November 1st, 2022. Project comments received by other agencies and departments are attached to the staff report or incorporated in the conditions of approval. Planning commission's decision begins a 10-business-day appeal period, which the commission's action may be appealed to the city council, and this would expire at 5:00 PM on December 29th, 2022. Staffs reviewed the comments received from agencies and put together the following items as the conditions of approval. Planning commission should review the project and approve or make modifications to the conditions of approval as needed. Staffs recommending planning commission conduct the public hearing and consider approval of the site and architecture and conditional use permit application, subject to the conditions of approval, and if approved, direct staff to file a notice of exemption with the San Joaquin County Recorder's Office. We'll go down to the proposed conditions of approval. We'll talk a little more in-depth about the specific conditions, and then there are general conditions that just kind of generally apply to all projects. So if planning commission warrants approval for this project, it would be a site and architecture and conditional use permit approval. It runs with the land and its binding on subsequent owners. The approval would be the development of a 4,409 square foot building with drive-through and associated 45 space parking, parking lot, landscaping, utility improvements for McDonald's quick serve restaurant. South San Joaquin Irrigation District did not have any facilities on the site, but they did want to see improvement plans for any secondary drainage. San Joaquin County Multispecies Habitat and Conservation Open Space Plan, this project is subject to that. They will have to reach out to that agency and follow their process for for habitat conservation. Environmental Health Department, the applicant must comply with all the environmental health department requirements as stated in their project referral, which is an attachment to the staff report. San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District also submitted a project referral comment list, which is attached in the staff report, which the applicant will have to comply with, except for condition number two, under-fired char boilers. After speaking with the applicant, they indicated that they don't use these, this type of equipment, so this condition doesn't apply. The applicant still needs to reach out to the air board and discuss equipment used with the district and comply with any rules that they have for their specific equipment. Condition number four, onsite solar. The applicant shall comply with the minimum standards imposed by the California Building Code, and at this time, onsite solar's not required. Condition number five, electrical vehicle chargers. The applicant shall comply with the minimum standards imposed by the California Building Code. At this time, commercial locations need to be EV charger ready, so the conduit run and ready to install, but they don't actually have to install the chargers at this time. Midestee Irrigation District submitted a comment letter and map. Those are included in the staff report. Any rooftop mechanical equipment will need to be screened to minimize visual impact from off the site. Any ground-mounted mechanical equipment will also need to be suitably screened, and that's subject to approval of the city planner. They will have to install a trashcan outside the front of the building. All landing areas shall be covered. Trucks and trucks at the delivery loading area shall turn off all motors except when entering or leaving the area, and there shall be signs posted specifying this. They have to put in bicycle parking for at least six bicycles. The next sections come out of engineering, grading, mapping, water, sewer, storm. If you have any questions on those, let us know. Lighting, all parking areas shall be illuminated with lighting that adequately lights the parking area without spilling onto adjacent properties. The photometric analysis will be required as part of the permitting stage to ensure that light stays on site, doesn't shine on the roadway, and that the light source is not visible from off the property. Trash enclosure, landscaping. Planning commission would need to talk about the trees along the sidewalk of Countrywood. Staffs recommending two additional trees in the private landscape strip along Countrywood to fill in for screening. Fire departments requesting a Knox box at the front of the building. Rest of the conditions are standard. If you have any questions on those, let us know. Included in the packet is the project application, conceptual plans, photographs, agency comment letters, and then the draft CEQA notice of exemption that would get filed with the county if the project is approved. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I do. I have a couple things before we get started. So I wanted to make you aware that there are an even number of you this evening that will be voting. A tie vote will result in a rejection of the proposed action, which is approval. So just wanted to make you aware before we get to that point that a tie vote will mean the motion to approve died, if that was the way the motion was phrased. And then I just wanted to remind you, on pages five through eight here, we have the meat of what you're looking at in terms of a meat of what you're looking at in terms of approval or denial. And so in terms of building a record, because this is an appealable action up to the city council, what you're, you know, if you could, as a favor to staff and to the public, if you could base any discussion of approval or denial on specifically these elements that come out of the Escalon Municipal Code and are based in law, these are going to be the only things, from a legal perspective, that you can rely on to approve or deny the project. So if, you know, we've got to be able to make a finding based on one of these criteria that it does or doesn't meet. You know, for denial, you've got to make a finding it doesn't meet a certain criteria. For approval, you're basically saying, yes, we agree that it meets all of the criteria that staff has laid out here. So we can always go through them individually, or if you feel, when we get to that point, that you're ready to, you know, just approve based on the way that staff has framed the findings in the staff report, then that's an option as well. We can discuss, you know, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. And then, again, as staff said, denial or approval of the project can be appealed up to the council. So just to be mindful about building a good record for the council and the public. And I think that's all I have, but if you have questions, of course, I'm here for the discussion. So, and then just generally, I know you all know this, but until we close the public hearing, just be careful not to make statements about where you're leaning, any which way on the project. So I think at this time, you can information gather and then open public comment when you're ready, and then close the public hearing and make your determination.
Thank you, Annie.
As Annie said, staff's available if you have any questions, and then the applicants are in the audience as well, that you can ask any questions at the public hearing as well.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Castellanos, any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question. Was there reason given on why the site plan was changed from eliminating the parking?
Yes. The application that you heard at the last meeting was the tentative map, and you kind of have two separate, two separate applications. You have the property owner working on splitting the lot, and then you have McDonald's working on developing one of the proposed lots. There was a discrepancy between the proposed lot size, between what was being asked on the tentative map versus what was being designed for the McDonald's site. And so when that was brought to the applicant's attention on both projects, McDonald's decided to shrink what they were proposing to match what the tentative map proposed instead. And so that is why they eliminated those parking spaces to bring themselves into conformance with what the map was proposing.
And then the other question was, I heard some testimony at the last meeting, there was some concerns about that driveway exiting on the Countrywood was shining into the home directly across the street. With these changes, is that approach, you know, on the Countrywood further to the west and not impacting as greatly the head-on lights from into the house?
We'll have to ask the applicant that question. The revised site plan that we received at this time doesn't show the opposite side of the street, so I can't quite tell where that lines up.
Okay.
We can ask the applicant.
One note on that as well, I think in the lighting section of the conditions, there's that requirement that there will have to be a test done to make sure that neighboring properties are not getting basically any spillage of the light.
Well, I thought that was from the existing lights around the property.
Oh, there's existing lights.
He's speaking about vehicle lights.
Not the vehicle.
Not yet.
Okay. It's not vehicle lights, correct. The lighting report.
The lighting condition in the report is in regards to whole lighting, yes.
I have no other questions.
All right. Commissioner Engel.
No, I think that was my concern. I was curious if the applicant had heard kind of the public's response to the last meeting and said, hey, well, let's, let's listen to them a little bit and move that down a little bit to match up with O'Reilly's, to kind of take it out of that residential area. So I think that answers that part of my question. I am curious as to what the public thinks as far as keeping the sidewalk trees to help with additional screening of that property.
All right. Commissioner Willis.
No questions of staff.
All right. Anything else, staff?
That's it for now.
Okay. With that, we will open the public hearing at 7:05 p.m. If you wish to speak on this project, either for or against, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and share your thoughts.
And we will take comments from folks online as well, but if you're online, if you could just raise your hand, is that a function on go-to-meeting?
I think it is. Typically, we take comment in the audience first, and then when we've exhausted the audience comments, then the chair will reach out to the people on the.
Great. So if you're online, just hang on, we will get to you.
Okay. My name is Robert Priest, representing Design U.A. We're the architect and engineer for the project. I figured I'd go first, just from a technical standpoint, and then Diana Uker with McDonald's, she is also here, so she'll come up after me and add any more context that you might have on that end. First, thank you, Diana, and staff for getting us to this point. Obviously, it's always a long process getting through the first stage even to get here, so thank you for everyone's time there. Thank you, commission, for, again, meeting with us tonight and the last hearing. We did go through and answer your questions about that. We did watch that hearing just so we understand some of the public comment and what's happening there. So some of that stuff, again, it's been thought about, and we've, we will do anything we can where possible. And then the biggest one really was the discrepancy on the plan from the lot line adjustment to the most revised plan you see today. Or regarding Chair Castellanos, for yours, it was, we moved the property line 17 feet from the original site plan that had the parking, and once that parking went away, it moved 17 feet to the west, eliminated the 19-foot stall, and then took the additional two feet, put that into the landscaping just to help any kind of turning radius that goes into that. And then that also is matching with what the property owner is doing with the lot line adjustment. So I did a couple things, again, for the better, obviously, for, based on some of the public comments that we saw last time. It further condensed the site down closer to McHenry, as tight as we can. McDonald's is kind of a unique building when it comes to most other drive-through restaurants or functions. It's very specific to operations and what happens in the kitchen. Our building is very large compared to most drive-through restaurants. We are probably almost a third to a half larger in the square footage size, and it really has to do with the operations side inside the restaurant. The biggest reason for that is to get cars in and get them out. So in a spot like this, for this store, and the store's not built on main highway trying to pull highway traffic, it's more of a regional store, local store, to serve really the community that's around. And so with that and the efficiency, we put cars through the driveway, the quicker they get in there, the quicker they get out of there, the less impact on the surrounding areas that are around the residence. Street tree-wise, we are proposing to leave those. We do feel, again, with the residences across the street, it helps buffer between the building to the residential across Countrywood. Again, we're on a commercial lot, so there's only so much we can do, but we are, based on the feedback from public last time and what the property owner is doing with that back lot, whatever ends up happening there, we don't have control over it, but again, what them as the property owner are probably going to understand what the public's feedback is to them, so as they're selecting a tenant to sell that to, that's probably going to impact it, because obviously, it's got to get approved at the end of the day. So no one's going to want to buy it if they can't do anything with it. So I'm sure that feedback that did come through last month and might come through tonight will be passed on to whoever is interested in that property behind. Other than that, any technical questions I'm here to answer, feel free, fire them at me, and I'll answer what I can. If not, we can bring Diana up, and she can answer anything specific to maybe more operational or non-technical items.
Right. Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Willis.
Is it, is it possible, you're from Santa Ana?
Correct.
There's a restaurant, or it's, I think it's a Dunkin' Donuts now in Modesto that used to be a Boston Market, and the, it runs this way with Standiford, the Main Street, and then Tully. What about changing the orientation of this and having it run more parallel to McHenry, the longer side on McHenry, and that could even narrow up the east to west? And that's one thought, and then another thought is, this isn't Modesto, this is 7,000 people. I'm not sure we need two queuing lines with the big monstrosity things overhead. Is that based on a population? Then you, you mentioned trying to get people in and out quickly, but if you had one queuing line, that could even narrow the property, bring the eastern boundary in to maybe line up the headlights and whatnot more advantageously with the property on the other side of Countrywood. Those are two thoughts I had on.
Sure. Yeah, the first question as far as the rotation, again, just kind of stepping back, again, the size of our building, the length of our building is based specific on the cook line and what's happening in there, the spacing of cars at the windows so that you don't have odd stacking and slowing down the transactions, either paying or picking up your food. So because of that length, there are certain orientations we can do, and the width of this lot isn't wide enough, kind of from Countrywood going south, to be able to rotate that building and keep basically as far as we can towards McHenry. And then also, it's a visibility thing, just from what the city wants to see. Majority of cities, if we put our drive-through lane on McHenry, the visibility of what's happening on McHenry, a lot of the time, will just never get approved from either commissions or staff. But the big one on this was really just the width isn't wide enough to do that. If we stayed in the orientation we're in and then just go down to a single lane, from, again, from an operation standpoint, historic data, and we have two lanes on every store that's in the system, if it only has one, that means it's old. Our percentage of drive-through is typically around, used to be around 70-plus percent lately, since COVID, it's about 85, and it's hanging there. So our lobby isn't, again, that's why McDonald's, we've developed the building to what it is today. Again, our seats, we're only 50-plus seats in this restaurant, it's a pretty small lobby, and that comes down to really the drive-through. So if you're treating a bad amount of through, drive-through, we need both lanes in order to put that throughput. If not, you're going to have cars queuing twice as long, typically more than twice as long in that drive-through waiting, which ultimately is going to impact the residential even more than just trying to push them through, just because of the headlights that are just stagnant and sitting there as you get really long queue lines.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Castellanos.
Yep, I have a question. Looking on the revised plans, the expanded one, you can actually read some stuff, you have a couple of parking spots that says Clean Air Carpool EV. Does that mean that you will have charging stations for EVs there, or is that just assigned parking for an EV or van pool?
It is typically assigned parking for EV or van pool. The infrastructure has to be in place. Again, depending on how the code, ultimately, it's a code requirement from a state building code, as far as what it's doing. Depending on the adoption of the new code, 2022 building code, then some of that stuff has to be put in place. So it'll ultimately depend on what happens to the building code and when it gets adopted versus when the plans get adopted. Intent right now is not to put an EV charger, so dedicate them for Clean Air or low emitting vehicles.
Okay. I have no other questions.
I have a bunch of questions. Hence the reason why I asked the questions that I did. First question is, I mean, I understand it's McDonald's, and you want a lot of, you want to be, have the parking available, but is there a reason why you have accessible parking, the four accessible stalls directly out of the drive-through?
The four directly out of the drive-through? Oh.
To, to the west?
In the site plan, can you show me which ones are?
Sure. That's right here. Why, why are those there?
All those ones are on the side.
Correct.
Ultimately, it's just if landscape percentage-wise, we're firing 10, we're at 18. So typically, if we can fit stalls, we'll put them in. Again, it's all from a, from an overall site, the municipal code is pretty light as far as parking, and again, we tend to have, in a McDonald's restaurant, we tend to have more staff than a normal drive-through restaurant would have. So between staff parking, if we only had 18 on the site, it's just probably not going to be enough to accommodate staff that's going to be there, plus customers. So in this case, those four that are there, it's not to say that we're married to them, we're, we're open to opening them up if it increases, and that's something that you as a commissioner are looking for. But with 45 stalls, we feel like that's a, a good number for what our building's going to require to function, based on the seat count and the staff count.
Would you consider removing those from the count and widening the entrance in and out of McHenry and eliminating the entrance and exit off of Countrywood? That way, it's as least disruptive to the residents and Westwood country as possible.
And, and we looked at it, kind of based on the feedback last time, and also from the city engineer, if we kept the one, I just don't think the site would function. I think it'd cause more problems from a couple reasons. One, delivery, we've got to get delivery. So the, there's no way to get a delivery truck on the site and circulate it.
So where, show us where the deliveries happen.
Correct. The intent right now, from a delivery standpoint, is the truck would turn down Countrywood, come in the driveway there, and then park in the stalls, basically the 12 stalls that are on the south side.
Okay.
The alternative is, they would come in that way, then they would back up towards the trash enclosure, so they can offload that way. The intent is, but again, they're going to shut it off, would be to the least disruptive to the surrounding areas as possible.
So I can, let me stop you there. I can tell you right now, the least disruptive possible is not Countrywood, because right now, the amount of truck traffic going down Countrywood is nil to hardly anything. So the minute that you introduce a delivery truck down Countrywood, now you're impacting everyone behind you.
Sure. If we only have the one entry on McHenry, we can't get a delivery truck on-site. They can't circulate that site. It's just too narrow to get a, a delivery truck through there.
Okay.
So at that point, they would probably be parking on Countrywood, and then off-site loading, meaning that we, there'd be a path basically coming across the public sidewalk into the back of the restaurant to load it. So typically, we always try, especially when we have corner lots, and again, that, it goes back to kind of one of your questions, have we looked at other lots in Escalon? That's one of the reasons why we try not to be mid-block. Again, our buildings are big, our delivery schedule, again, we work with cities based on requirements, what we're allowed to do, but that's why we try to keep corner lots, really, so delivery trucks can come in, circulate, leave, kind of like a gas station. You never see gas stations mid-blocks, and that's part of the reason why.
But as a planning commissioner, sir, I feel like you really didn't answer my question. My question is, would you consider, as a condition of approval, eliminating those four spots? I understand it doesn't work with the deliveries per se, but we have an upset neighborhood trying to come into the community, and it's our job as a planning commission to meet you halfway and figure out the best solution for our residents. So we're not saying, yea or nay, we're trying to figure out, okay, what works for our community, what works for us as planning commission, and what works for you as the applicant? So.
Can I interject there? Because I appreciate your concern, but really, what we can look at here legally, according to council, is site and architecture. So I do understand that there are concerns for the neighborhood. I understand that, but legal, please correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're bound to look at here is site and architecture.
And that was my concern, is eliminating those four parking spots are directly related to site.
Yeah. In my opinion, I think if those spots are removed to widen the driveway, it's still not going to function what we need it to function as a McDonald's. I think we have to have that out on the Countrywood.
Yeah, I can respond briefly. First, I guess I would say we are also looking at the conditional use permit as part of this item, so there's that. So there's that aspect of it. But I would agree that under perhaps D1, just at first glance, one of the conditions you can look at is site plan elements, including circulation arranged on the site so that activities are integrated and harmonious with the neighborhood and surrounding area and are arranged to produce an attractive, efficient, and cohesive development of sustained desirability. So I think the phrasing there is probably broad enough that considering traffic patterns, truck deliveries, that kind of thing would be appropriate.
Thank you for correcting me.
Yeah, then again, just to add a piece to it. And again, I get there's no traffic on Countrywood. Now it's adding one truck that comes in to do those deliveries. I think one of the things, again, that is going to help with moving that lot line, that 17 feet that happened. Before, with that parking there, it made the radius pretty wide where cars could come access that drive-through off McHenry or off Countrywood. Now that it's tighter, the ability to make that U-turn off Countrywood or from Countrywood and get into the drive-through lane is pretty tight. You can get into the first lane, you can't get into the second lane. So I think over time, what's going to happen is residents are going to realize that. And it's going to limit the amount of usage that's going to happen on that Countrywood. Again, at some point down the line, again, I can't speak to what's going to happen to the back parcel, but there's going to be some kind of cut on the Countrywood. So even if it's not the McDonald's, and again, I can give my opinion on it. Ultimately, McDonald's makes that final call of whether we can get rid of that. But at some point, that commercial lot behind us, something's going to have a cut on the Countrywood. So it's just, but that's where that's going to be.
And that planning commission will deal with that. Right now, we're trying to figure out a solution for this. Next question. So I guess the answer is no. We won't eliminate the entrance and exit off of Countrywood. Or?
From my side, I'm saying it's not ideal.
Right.
I can't answer yes or no. That ultimately has to go to the client.
Okay. Maybe we can ask your client when we're done asking you questions.
Yep.
We would want to follow up with the fire department as well.
Okay.
Because they'll probably, they'll probably need to comment on that to make sure that we're able to accommodate them when they're needed to locate there.
Yeah. Next question. On the east side of the property. So let's say that drive aisle stays where it is. Would you consider putting in a CMU block wall, a privacy wall, to minimize any effect to the adjacent neighborhood, separating this property from the other property?
From us to the parcel to the, or the, what will be law line adjustment to the west?
Correct.
Yeah, we're not opposed to that.
So you would consider putting in a privacy wall?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it. Again, Deanna, I can comment fully, but I haven't seen pushback where they wouldn't do that if required or requested.
Okay. Staff, have we? So currently, right now, if someone is going south on McHenry and wanting to turn into this property, is there currently a turning lane there?
There's a set turn, two-way turn lane down McHenry.
Will it be a dedicated turn lane or it still follows that? So there's a specific turn to turn left, there would be a turn left into this property?
Are you asking if an arrow will be striped right in front of this property?
Correct.
That would be up to engineering if that's needed.
By putting in a grease pit, does that create any odors that might affect the adjacent neighborhood?
No.
So do you have to clean that out periodically? How does that work?
Correct. Yeah, so there's a set schedule as far as cleaning that. So there becomes no odor that builds up. It's self-contained, it's sealed, they come out, they pump it, and then it's done on a regular basis.
Do you know what the frequency of that is?
It depends on the use. Again, Deanna can probably touch base specifically. I know it tends to happen monthly. They schedule that service to come out, so it gets cleaned out before it becomes problematic. And again, staff can condition something in there related to saying, make sure that it's happening and not becoming a nuisance from a smell standpoint. But again, we don't want our customers walking into the restaurant, sitting in the drive-through smelling odors coming out of a grease interceptor.
I'm worried about the neighborhood.
Yep.
All right, so what about for our residents on, this is related to traffic flows? So with, with the driveway the way it is, I see it becoming problematic for our residents that currently come down Countrywood and have to make a left-hand turn to go south on McHenry. Is there, I'm worried that now we're creating an even bigger issue with traffic related to our residents living in Westwood country. So have you guys looked at a traffic study? I mean, how do we try to be as least disruptive for the additional traffic on Countrywood?
Yeah, and I think the traffic data that we gave over to staff, again, it's considered a local store, highway store pulling in. It's not a destination store. So the traffic that's come to the store is already, in Escalon, they're already using those streets. And I think what Diana had said as far as traffic impact, it was less than 3% impact on McHenry based on McDonald's peak counts and what they provide. So based on that traffic data, it's not anticipated that it's going to impact any of residents and what they're trying to do leaving Countrywood. And again, if it was, the city engineer would flag something and we would provide reports or address anything that they needed to on that. But engineering at this point hasn't flagged anything.
I'm just thinking that if, let's say, someone is out of town and wants to try to make a left-hand turn to go down McHenry there, and they're not familiar, and they're sitting there, and they're sitting there, and they're sitting there, trying to make a left-hand turn. And staff, obviously, our city engineer isn't here, but at that particular intersection, could we possibly entertain doing a right turn only to avoid any backups there? Because the residents in the neighborhood will know, oh, that's a right-hand turn only, I'm going to go down to Albury, and I can avoid all of the traffic. But if it's an out-of-town person, they're just going to want to turn. You're forcing them to turn right. That way, the residents aren't impacted by any traffic backups. I mean, that would probably require a city engineer approval, but by making a right-hand turn only, it keeps traffic moving in that area.
Are we talking about the right-hand turn only out of the McDonald's?
No. That was, that was my additional question, but I misspoke when I typed that out. I meant making it a right-hand turn only.
On Countrywood.
On Countrywood at McHenry, not right-hand turn only into the neighborhood.
Yeah, and I think based on the city engineer, they would look at it. But I think they were opposed to making that a, at least the latest answer I saw from them, that they were opposed to making that a right turn only.
I think they were opposed on my question, saying no right-hand turn into Countrywood. I'm down Countrywood into the neighborhood. What I'm talking about is this intersection right here at McHenry and Countrywood.
Yeah, and ultimately, I think engineering is going to have to look at that on their end.
Okay.
I know when they tend to do that because of the residential development behind, they'll look at those things and they'll make that decision based on what's going to happen with the residents behind.
I'm almost done.
No worries.
So my question regarding revising the site plan. But what would happen if you took, instead of having the drive-through right along Countrywood, what would happen is if you shifted the building down or to the south direction a little bit more and create that way and created a buffer between, a bigger landscape buffer between Countrywood and the drive-through aisle? Because these neighbors, they're not going to want to drive back to their neighborhood and see the long line of McDonald's. If it's, if we could create some sort of landscape barrier and push the property down. I mean, the drive-through is literally right on the edge of Countrywood. So can we shift that down at all?
Yeah, right now, looking at it, it's got a 10-foot landscape buffer between the property line to the start of the drive-through.
Okay.
Again, we can heavily landscape that as much as you need us to. Again, we've done screen walls there, we've done other things along there to do it. As far as pushing it down, looking at it, we're open to do it. I don't know how much we can squeeze out of it, just looking at the parking stall lengths, the drive aisles, and then the sidewalk basically between. It looks like there's only about two feet of kind of buffer that could be squeezed out. And again, if we can do it, we have no problem doing that. And then that gives you 10 or 12-foot landscape instead of a 10. But again, if you need planning or screening or low-screen wall, something like that to assist, then that helps you in your decision, then that's something we're not opposed to doing typically.
Well, sure, it would be nice to look at a screening wall instead of a long line of people wanting to get their chicken McNuggets.
Yep.
So what, and legal, please stop me if I'm not allowed to ask this question. But what other sites did you look at here in Escalon?
I can't speak specifically to it. We went to the real estate manager to see what they do. That's, they've got a whole real estate team that looks at sites and evaluates properties all over. And based on their feedback and their screens, they have different metrics. And again, it's beyond what I, my knowledge of it. But they've looked at properties throughout Escalon to find out and whether it's a mid-block issue, whether it's access to certain kind of roadways or whatever their metrics might be. This is the only one that was meeting those screens in Escalon. So at this point, this is the only one that they're looking at and have interest in to be able to develop.
Last question for now. By eliminating those parking stalls, you may have answered this when Commissioner Castellanos asked it, but I don't remember the answer. By eliminating those parking stalls along the drive aisle, what is the width now from the back property line to the edge of the next property line?
Yeah, so looking at it, based on the new one, we are 134 feet from the back property line that shares the property line with the residences.
Okay.
To the new lot line. And again, 134 feet is pretty wide.
Right.
That gives flexibility to the property owner on what tenant can go in there. And again, I know at the last commission meeting, it was talked about, it's not like they're just going to go in there and put another drive-through restaurant. It's not, it's built more like a buffer. Anytime you have basically a commercial zoning right against a residential zoning, it's going to be a specific use that's going to take that property. So one of the items, and again, that's where we worked with the property owner to say, hey, let's try to compress the site as much as we can from east to west, maximize that back lot so that, again, it becomes a development at some point that is able to be a good buffer between us and the residential on the back.
And I think that's important. I mean, we definitely want to have a buffer there. Because I know the neighbors surely don't want to look out and see that. So when I mentioned about the block wall, that's what I was thinking is creating a block wall that would create an even bigger buffer so that there, if they had to look at something, they're looking at a block wall or something as opposed to looking at a drive-through entrance. All right, that's all I have questions on for now.
No problem. If you need anything else from me, feel free, call me up. And I'll let Deanna come up, and she can speak of any specific questions that I could not answer for you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Deanna Uker, and I'm an employee of McDonald's Corporation. I'm the project manager, construction manager responsible for this project. I just wanted to say thank you also for your guys' time and allowing us to get up here and speak. And Deanna, you've been great. Thanks for everything leading up to today and helping us. She's been awesome to work with. I've worked for McDonald's for about seven years. And I think if anyone would have asked me about 10 years ago, if I ever thought I'd work for a fast food chain, let alone McDonald's, I probably had a, would have had a good laugh about it. But here I am, and I'm actually a resident of Ripon. So I understand the small-town community feel. I've lived there for about 10 years. And previously, I was a resident of Manteca my entire life. Most of my summers and winters were spent up in the mountains and the lakes, passing through Escalon, stopping at Burger King along the way. So very familiar with the traffic patterns and the community and how these small towns operate. I exited Manteca and went to Ripon for that small-town feeling. So I understand the concerns with the residents of the community. And, you know, I just want to say, you know, McDonald's are a big company, but we're a small, we're a small corporation, we're a family. Our stores are owned by local owner-operators that live amongst our communities or close by our communities. They're not from offices in New York City and.
Gentlemen in the back, if you want to share some comments, please go out to the hall. It's disruptive to us to hear, Deanna. Thank you.
Our, so as I was saying, so our franchisees, owner-operators, as we call them, they live amongst our communities. They're not sitting in an office in New York City or Chicago. They live and work in our communities. They provide jobs and for young and old people and everyone in between. They are outstanding members of our community. I know the two that we would consider for this location are what I would consider friends, and they're outstanding citizens. They contribute to their communities, whether it be for local use sports, you know, the schools, coffee with the cop. I know I'm constantly asking for handouts at my kids' schools, and they never hesitate to write a check. So they're definitely wonderful people. They run wonderful stores. You know, McDonald's really embraces our communities, and we hope that our, the communities that we work in embrace us as well. One of the reasons why we selected Escalon was, one, I have family and friends that live in the community and have asked me for years why we don't have one here. So it was a little bit of a pet project of mine. And we've spent the last few years doing a lot of modernization and haven't had a lot of time to focus on development, new stores. So now that our portfolios are about 95% modernized, we are now looking at new sites. And Escalon has been one that, a community that has been underserved. Our studies have shown, thanks to technology, cell phones, we're able to see, you know, the habits of residents in the communities, where they shop, you know, where they go to eat. And Escalon definitely needs a McDonald's. And I know maybe not everybody would like a McDonald's here. The store is intended to be a neighborhood store. We aren't going to, it's not a flagship, it's not a resort. Their people aren't going to come from Stockton and Modesto to specifically visit the store. It's a modest, modestly planned store that will generate average sales. And we hope that you guys embrace us and allow us to move forward. And I look forward to, you know, any questions you might have, and I hope I can answer them for you. That's all I kind of had to say personally.
Commissioner Lewis, questions?
Well, the same thing I asked Mr. Priest. In a population of 7,000, do you see two queuing lines necessary rather than just one to bring maybe the eastern boundary in on the, on the site? What are your thoughts?
So our double drive-through lane is a standard at McDonald's. What, you know, whether it's high volume, you know, or not. Our goal is always to get, as Robbie mentioned, customers in and out and serving our customers to their, you know, it's a quick serve, so they want to get in and out. And we found that when we have two order points, the flow of traffic and how fast people get their food makes much, much more sense. Otherwise, when you have one order point, one lane, the lanes back up, and then they end up, you know, depending on peak times, like maybe lunchtime, they'll back up, you know, block parking stalls and whatnot. So when we have the double lane drive-through, whether we have 20 cars in the drive-through or not, which, you know, isn't likely. You know, it's meant to be efficient so that there isn't this backlog of customers and cars. Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Question that I had earlier is shrinking the width of the of the lot running east and west. I was at this drive-through, not the drive-through, but the the road off of Countrywood. How's that going to impact the resident home right directly across the street? And you know, where the lot line lines up in relationship to, say, O'Reilly's?
Yeah, so the so the actual drive-through queuing itself, if say all those cars were depicted were in the drive-through, they would be, they would actually be facing O'Reilly. They're not, they're not facing the the home that's closest to it. But Countrywood Lane, it slightly encroaches a little bit. Oh yeah, this is a good depiction right here. So if they were coming out, there would be some, this is the old site plan, so we've actually shifted it over and those parking, so use those parking stalls as more of a guide. It appears whatever maybe the front room is on that home, it's pretty close to that right there. You know, shrinking up, you know, I think we have to consider if we're going to do a lot of landscaping to, do we want to cover up what's we're seeing in the drive-through as far, you know, customers in there are doing a screen wall, you know, we would consider whatever, you know, barriers you guys want. But as far as like customers going in and out, you know, and our our site, the intention on our site, it's, you know, this lot is kind of the perfect flow for people. The ideal situation and what makes the most sense, what the customer habit is going to be is that it's going to come, they're going to come off of McHenry and they're going to go into the drive-through and they're going to exit and the closest exit point is McHenry. The only people that I would see using Countrywood would be the actual residents of the community. Most people that are passing through, if even if they're not in the community, like me, for example, if I was coming from Ripon, oh, I want to grab some fries or something before I go to my mother-in-law's house, you know, I would in and out on McHenry because she lives off First Street. The community that lives behind there, they would be more so likely to use Countrywood. Now, I can't, I can't predict obviously everybody, but you know, if there are travelers. Because I understand, you know, McHenry is a main highway. People, some people commute from Mariposa Road and Modesto back and forth to work. Most people aren't wanting to get off of McHenry. They're wanting to, you know, get in and out and they're not going to take side streets unless they live here.
I have another question. Do you have statistics on other McDonald's in like the Modesto area? And so you, the estimate was like seven hundred and seventy-six cars per day for this location. Do you have any statistics on like the McDonald's on McHenry Avenue in Modesto or?
I would have to get back with you on that. I don't specifically know offhand. I could pull that information. You know, each store is a little unique. Modesto is a totally different breed of cities and, you know, it's way more populated. And the McHenry store, I'm trying to think, what's the cross, which cross street in McHenry? Is it Prescott?
No, no, it's it's, it's down, it's.
It's okay.
Is it okay? No, no.
Crow's Road Safeway?
Yeah, further north than Safeway. It's right next, it's right across the street from the Velvet Grill.
Oh, kind of by the mall. Wait, no, 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 no.
The Velvet Creamery.
Now it's a liquidators.
Okay.
It's kind of a midpoint. It's not, it's an interior of, well, it's quasi. I mean, the street kind of dead ends into the.
It's really hard to say. I I could, like I said, I could pull the information. I don't know it offhand. One of my, our other guests may know. But it's really not, they're not comparable considering this one being, like I said, more of a neighborhood store. And that one is is a bigger, you know, metropolitan suburban.
Well, based on the seven hundred and sixty-seven cars, if you assume eighteen hours a day, you're open. I'm assuming it's going to be less than that because that would be six AM to twelve o'clock at night. Somebody has their speaker on.
I'll see if I can get that information for you while we're in in between. I just, I don't know that offhand.
I was just curious. I mean, just.
I don't want to tell you the wrong thing.
To kind of give an idea on the impact of, you know, the the neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, the closest to this proposed. I have no other questions.
Yeah. Well, and like I said, I just to reiterate, you know, it's it's not a, it's not a destination report. You know, the people that live in your community that would eat at McDonald's would, you know, be the one, the same ones that are frequenting, you know, Ace Hardware and O'Reilly and Dollar Tree. You know, it's, you're going to see similar patterns as far as like, it's not going to be busting at the seams with with customers, I think. You know, we, like I said, we have modest projections for sales. It's not going to be necessarily pulling even a lot off the one-twenty. As much as we'd love to be in Burger King spot, they're not selling and they'd be selling probably too, but yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Engel?
Sure. I hear you, neighborhood stores. So the closest one I could maybe think of is in Riverbank at Patterson and Oakdale.
So with this. By the movies?
Yeah, west of the movie theater there, yeah. So site size, layout looks a little bit different, but site size, is that similar to the one Riverbank?
It's a very, it's a lot smaller lot. It also has a play, play structure, a play place, so it's very large. I know the site pretty well. We go to the movies over there a lot and oftentimes grab snacks before we go there. It's, this site is, you know, when we were looking at it originally, we were actually looking at the whole lot and it was just massive. Didn't make sense. So that's why the tentative, the parcel split came about. And even with the split, we're still, I don't want to say creating, building a dream site. It has the most efficient drive-through, the more parking than we need. It's, it's going to have a great flow. We're not going to have the congestion you would see. That store actually in Riverbank can get get pretty nasty with the traffic.
Yeah.
Backs up on the street. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, there's, we're limited on that size because the parcel is very small. This one is not.
Does that serve roughly the same amount of people though that we anticipate this store to serve?
No, that one would serve, I don't, same thing, I don't have the volume off time ahead. It's considering that community. And then the sales generators, like the movie theater and just the traffic along there are are way greater than what we would see here in Escalon.
The square, square footage of the building. So you have this at forty-four oh nine. Is that a similar square footage of that building or is it?
I believe that one's like a little bit smaller. It's an older style building. This one has, believe it or not, more kitchen, I feel like than anything, because we have just so much equipment for efficiencies within our kitchen. That store specifically, I think it was our older style. I think it's like a thirty-five ninety-seven, so it's going to be smaller, has a very small lobby. The play place takes up most of it. When you walk in it, there's really just a really small seating area and queuing area and then the big play place. And we're not doing a play place of the store.
I have no other questions. Thanks.
All right. I just have one question. Robbie wouldn't do it. But you're representing McDonald's. Is there any way that we can eliminate the entrance and exit off of Countrywood?
My personal opinion is that is that it wouldn't probably be safe. I don't think that fire would pass it, just based on stores I've built previously. Also, you know, it would make it challenging for our truck deliveries. You know, we have to have certain standards in place, like he mentioned, for, you know, trucks coming in and out. And and we do get some skilled drivers that, you know, that make him come in off of McHenry, back in and pull right back off. We just, I don't know until the store opens, like who would be assigned to it. And I I am by no means making any promises, but it's not unheard of. And I know that seems to be a bit of a, bit of a source of contention is the trucks on, you know, the couple deliveries a week, how will they intern exit? And giving them a safe route. I think, you know, we would have to like fudge around with the the site plan, maybe remove some of the like planners in the middle if we were going to do that. I I don't think fire would would allow it, to be honest. I think, um, I think we would have to, and eventually, I know it someday down the line, somebody's, somebody's going to have to be able to get in and out of that property. So, you know, it, I, yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's something we could get an answer from someone engineering fire. But I don't think it, I don't think we could do that.
Just, I'm thinking with those four stalls that I mentioned to Robbie, the driveway could be widened there. I understand we don't know the drivers and their capabilities. My concern as the planning commissioner is to be as least disruptive to residents on Countrywood and Westwood Country as much as make as least disruption for them as possible. And there's a lot of people that utilize that sidewalk. And and from a safety standpoint, I'm concerned about people going in and out of that area. Kids riding bikes along that sidewalk.
On Countrywood, sorry.
On Countrywood, yeah. So that that entrance and exit off of Countrywood are, I mean, honestly, that that is a huge concern for me.
Yeah. So our deliveries are usually early in the morning, not like one AM, usually like five AM, I believe. And so, you know, you're not going to have many people out at the hour. I understand that concern with that too, being in the early morning. I'm not sure, you know, what the other businesses on, you know, one Dollar Tree and O'Reilly and them, when they get their deliveries. If has the city like put ordinances in place on like hours of deliveries? You know, is that something that is typically asked of commercial or quick serve or just businesses in general? But I mean, everyone has to get deliveries. So at some point, and I know not everybody has homes on Countrywood. So, but there are like O'Reilly, for example, do we know when they get their deliveries? Is it during the day or is it like early in the morning? We do it early because, you know, there's the least amount of customers and foot traffic. So they get in, drop everything off and get out and move on.
I don't know O'Reilly's delivery schedule.
Okay. And and would you guys mind maybe switching back to the revised site plan? So I want to make sure I understand too, you're, I wasn't totally following you on the the four stall question. Are you talking about these ones right by the entrance right there?
Correct.
And so you would want, you're asking to make the inch, the exit entrance wider?
Removal of those, make the entrance and exit wider area. And then when people, so people would come out of the drive-through and they would immediately turn right and go out on McHenry. And you could make that that exit, keep your entrance the way it is, but instead of making it a dual entrance and exit, have one lane as an entrance, one lane as an exit. And that forces people to go on McHenry. And it eliminates the issue along Countrywood.
Okay. So, um, you know, if the city engineer wants to propose that, you know, we would look at it. I just don't think that they would want, it's usually not easy to get entrances and exits like separated like that from like a Department of Transportation standpoint very easily. And because the natural flow of our site is that they come in and the way they exit off, they would have to really be going out of their way or know that there's an access to homes to go out of their way to go out Countrywood. It's the easiest point to get out is going to be McHenry.
And I agree with you. If somebody's coming out of the drive-through, they're not going to drive through the entire parking lot to go down just so they could get out of Countrywood.
Correct, yeah. Yeah. So you're, and you're, I think, maybe just concerned that maybe there's a backup. But with our flow and the way we have our drive-through efficiencies set up, you know, it should be a pretty even flow. I come to Escalon quite a bit. I service my vehicle at the Ford dealership and, you know, McHenry's busy, but it's not, it's not like the Stanford and Modesto and whatnot, you know, where you have crazy amounts of traffic just stacked up. It's, you guys have done a wonderful job of widening the roads and, you know, it's been great coming through town and, you know, moving at ease. I don't see our store adding any extra traffic to that. I think it it will complement it nicely. But do you have any other questions on that?
I have a question for legal. Are, I mean, I guess, are we allowed as the planning commissioner, are we allowed to talk about deliveries at all? Because the deliveries are related to site and architecture.
And noise and lighting and things like that. I think you're fine to discuss deliveries. What I would say, if if the drive-through or the driveway off of Countrywood is going to be a point of contention and maybe things start to seem like they're hinging on that and we want to get fire, we want to get DOT to take a look at it, things like that, then, you know, obviously, we would prefer to just continue the hearing. But if you feel like you can make a decision tonight based on what's been presented, that's fine. But yes, in terms of your question, yes, you can discuss things like your, you know, your delivery backends and things like that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And with that, I'll reiterate that this is the public hearing. So if you have comments for or against, please come up, state your name. For those of you that are online, we will go through the audience. And when we have no more audience discussion, then we will open it up to online communications. So feel free to come to the podium and just state your name and say your piece.
Hi, again, I'm Cindy Saunders, one four nine four Countrywood Lane. I'm actually the, not the house that the driveway looks out onto, but I'm the neighbor to them. I do want to also speak for my neighbors. They are an elderly couple that aren't able to attend tonight. But the driveway that they're proposing does face directly into their front window. They are an elderly couple who came to Escalon to retire and have peace from the Bay Area. And now they're going to have seven hundred and fifty cars, you know, driving out to their, right in front of their window. But not only that, but I came to Escalon from Manteca for the peace too. And I was told, like I had said before, I was told that homes were going to be built in front of me, just like mine. Mind you, that may not, I don't know what happened there, if I was lied to with that. But what I do want to say is, some people have asked, did you never think that anything was going to be developed there? And I said, no, I I did. I mean, I I understand that. And even if it wasn't homes that are built there, I wasn't anticipating a two-lane drive-through McDonald's to be built there. Like one of the planning commissioners had said at the last meeting, it's a very, McHenry has very sleepy, like auto, O'Reilly's and Dollar General. I know there's not seven hundred and fifty cars per day going through those, those, those businesses. So I I just wanted to say, I have two small children. I have a two-year-old and a three-year-old that play out on the street. They ride their bikes. Me and my husband are great citizens of the community. We pay a lot of taxes on our home. But it, our dreams kind of being crushed. We, we've done so much improvements to our land. We put a pool in our backyard and we've made all these, we've made our dreams come true and we really wanted to settle down and nest here. And it's just kind of being ruined by this, this two-lane McDonald's and all these people that are going to be in my front yard. But yeah, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Planning Commissioner, my name is Peter Anstrun. I live in Escalon, just off of Countrywood. So I want to thank you for your time. But I asked you guys, considering this, put yourself in her position. Put yourself in the elderly couple's position where headlights all hours of the day are going to be facing the front of your house. You know, listen to a speaker consistently, ask what the order is, confirm the order and then repeat the order back. These speakers are going to be, what, fifty feet from someone's front door? This is not what the neighborhood wants. The trucks coming down Countrywood, there's a truck that comes down anyways for O'Reilly's. When that thing's backing up, it blocks the entire lane. Now you're going to add another truck going down. Now you're gonna add another truck going down the driveway to a McDonald's? That's not what we want. You guys gave them plenty of options to alternate their plans, to conform with how the other buildings are, the O'Reilly's. When the houses were approved to go in a commercial area, you guys owe it to them not to put a business directly in front of their house. So now these people, poor people, are gonna have three headlights facing their house all hours of the night. The applicants have come up here and contradicted themselves, saying that it's gonna be, oh, a neighborhood building, but then they say that it's gonna be so busy that they need two lanes of traffic. 700 cars coming into a building in front of a house is unacceptable. I hope you guys understand that these people spent a lot of money on these houses. When they were for sale, they were going for over $500,000. Ask yourself, if you spent $500,000 to live in a peaceful community, if you think it's acceptable for a drive-through, three lanes of traffic, headlights facing your house at all hours of the night. People that live on Judith, I'm sorry, Swanson, they don't want to listen to a speaker day in, day out, every day for the entire year, 18 hours a day, asking for people's orders. We hear the high school football games. We're gonna hear McDonald's drive-through. When I'm leaving at work in the morning, I don't want to have to come down Countrywood and wait for a big rig to back up and park down a slim driveway and then block traffic for everyone else. These people they're saying are gonna take McHenry, we know that's not true. People are gonna want to have a stop sign or something, easy access to get onto McHenry. They're gonna take Countrywood, they're gonna go down that drive-through or driveway next to the drive-through. If this is something that you guys absolutely want, I would ask at least you guys move the property line to be consistent with O'Reilly's. And I would ask that you guys not allow big rigs and traffic to flow onto Countrywood into our neighborhood. Now, if you look at the picture, I think it was on page 56, if you see the driveway directly across from the entrance into the McDonald's right there, that's someone's personal driveway. Put yourself in that position. Do you want to be fighting with traffic trying to get out of your driveway? Do you want to be fighting with the big rig trying to go to work in the morning? Do you want to have people lined up with lights glaring in your front window? That's all we ask, is you guys consider these things. You guys gave McDonald's plenty of opportunities to change stuff, but they're obviously showing that they're not, not willing to alter their plans that they have. That's what I have to say, and I appreciate you guys' time.
I have a question for you, sir. When does O'Reilly make their deliveries?
I have no idea. But if you are living in the neighborhood, you've seen the big rig, it comes down and it backs up because it, the, where they load into is right off of Countrywood.
So they go down Countrywood?
And they back up into the driveway.
Into O'Reilly's.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel.
She can't, although, you know, if, if you want to have her wait until other people have gone, but I think if it relates to that, it might make sense, just go ahead and go now.
I just wanted to say that the, the O'Reilly trucks come at 8:00 AM. It's usually like three times a week. And the semi-truck does block the half of Countrywood Lane. I, I was actually gonna take a picture of it the other day and I wish I would have so that you guys could see it, but it, it completely blocks half of the, the street. So you have to go actively around the semi-truck to, to get.
Thanks. Who's next?
We don't bite, feel free to come up.
James Reinaveld, I also live on Countrywood Lane. Just have a couple of questions about what they said. First, we can talk about the smell, they said there's gonna be no smells coming from the McDonald's.
From the grease in our septic.
Yeah, but I don't know, you can smell McDonald's from blocks away, we all know that, right? They also mentioned that it would be just like cars going to Ace and to O'Reilly's. Again, you'd think people are going there as frequently as they would go to a McDonald's. Secondly, you had asked them a question about speed bumps to help alleviate the problem and they said, no, you have plenty of room. As everybody that lives on that road knows, people speed. I think they said what, 475 feet between stop line, stop line? I mean, that's plenty of time to get high speeds. We all walk, are young kids around there, my wife is pregnant, we're having a family. We do not want this in our neighborhood. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Hi, Brittany Reinaveld. I am pregnant, I have a two-year-old, we play on Countrywood all day long, people speed all day long. Let's factor in the fact that we have, you're gonna open a business that I'm assuming is going to be either late hours or 24 hours, which means, let's be real here, people from the VI are gonna be coming through our neighborhood because that's what you would do to go get your late night snack after you've been drinking. I just feel like this is such a mistake. As someone, I think her name is Diana, right, or Diane? She seemed, you seemed very nice and I think it's great that you live in Ripon and you live in a small town. I'm sure you don't live by the fast food joints in Ripon because they're all in one area, just like how our Taco Bell and our Burger King were. This doesn't make sense on McHenry. I always knew that was gonna be commercial. I mean, it, it, it's built, it's commercial, it's zoned for commercial. But I don't think when we bought our house, we envisioned a drive-through there. Also, when you go to turn on to McHenry, like I'm obviously, I'm just, I'm not the best driver, I'm a great driver, I'm safe, but I'm saying like I'm not very aggressive. And so Countrywood is actually the road I take because if I try to go down Oldery or even all the other ones, you can't see if you're trying to turn left. Unless I'm gonna turn right, I'll take those, but honestly, like you can't, it's hard to get past already. So Countrywood's like our one go-to, which does get blocked up with the truck that goes for O'Reilly's, but that happens once a day. Now you're gonna have a drive-through there, it's gonna be out of commission. Our whole neighborhood has this, it's beautiful, but it has the smallest roads. When a bus comes down, which I'm glad the buses come down there, obviously I have children and that are probably gonna use the bus system. My brother-in-law works, is the transportation guy for the Escalon. When he has the buses come down, it's a nightmare, everyone has to pull off. Even when two normal-sized trucks go down there, we're pulling off the road for each other. Now you're gonna introduce all these cars down our road. I understand, I would love a McDonald's in Escalon, that's great, do it, grow it. But that part doesn't make sense to put it there, in my opinion. Thank you.
All right. Who's next? All right, if no one else, oh, here comes one.
Good evening, my name is Chad Rich, I live on Countrywood as well. Thank you guys very much for taking the time this evening to listen to our neighborhood. There's a lot of concerns regarding it, everything from number one, the children, Brittany just spoke about it. We have very, very thin roadways. I was actually the person that proposed the stop sign on Countrywood at Melissa due to the traffic conditions and the high speeds. I, I met with the Chief of Police, Chief Board just when that all came up and occurred. And I had some legal counsel assist me in making sure I had the right verbiage to get that approved due to our thin roadways. If more than one car is parked on one side or the other of our roadways at that location, you cannot pass two vehicles. The additional influx in vehicle transportation going on Countrywood coming from St. John Road is a very, is a concern of mine. We have a lot of children in our neighborhood, including my own. I'm concerned about my home value, never realized that there would be a McDonald's at the end of our road. And I'm concerned of what that's gonna do to my home value of when I do go to resell. Noise ordinance, they never talked about what kind of hours we're gonna be operating in. I don't know what the city ordinance is exactly for the decibels at that location, but I do know the elderly couple and the two other residents that just purchased homes in the close proximity of that is gonna be a very big concern to them, considering the planning commission, not knowing if you guys were on the board at the time, approved that to be residential. I was notified that that was also gonna be continued additional residential area, which now we have been notified that it's all commercial. Don't recall them answering the question of the trap, if any traffic study had been done at that location. As far as what, how many vehicles pass down Countrywood as well as McHenry, I don't recall seeing any strips in the roadway to prove that there was a traffic study done, but I could be wrong. The difference is 18 feet, so they moved the property line, not 18, 18 feet back. 18 feet puts those, the egress to the property directly in line with that residence. That's a bedroom window at that location. Another concern of mine, I don't see on, on, on this is going to their plans, don't see anything on there for RVs, buses or big rigs, which means everybody with large vehicles going out of town, going on vacation, is gonna be parking on Countrywood, whether it's facing eastbound or whether they come in through the parking lot, loop out their egress and park westbound across from O'Reilly. There's gonna be an influx of vehicles at those locations that is a concern to people trying to come onto and off of Countrywood Lane onto McHenry. The speed bumps, even with the stop sign, I've actually been doing some homework as far as trying to get additional speed bumps even on Countrywood, Countrywood just because of the densely, oh, due to the speed and due to the how roadway is, we need to slow down traffic at that, in that area, you know, so. O'Reilly's big rig, they didn't answer that. It is approximately 8:00 AM blocking, already blocking the roadway during traffic hours as far as taking kids to and from school. I could only imagine what 700 additional vehicles, and just saying, we'll, we'll just say one-third of that going up and down our street. St. John Road to, to McHenry is a, is like a little thoroughfare that goes between the two. However, they were saying regarding O'Reilly and Ace, a lot of people who take St. John actually go down to Catherine before cutting across. And that's talking to friends and other people throughout our community. O'Reilly is an auto parts store, you usually only go to an auto parts store if you need an auto part item. It's not a, it's not a restaurant to where people are gonna be eating at all hours. Another thing, I know the people within our community, within our neighborhoods, some have known that it was gonna be commercial and, and which is great. We didn't think it was gonna be a 24-hour or an 18-hour commercial. We thought it was gonna be something like businesses, whether it, it's an eight-to-five type business where we're not gonna be impacted to all hours into the evening. And that, that causes a concern for a lot of us due to the noise. And I just had one other note. It even says right here on number 16 that the site is designed to contribute a speedy access to all buildings for fire, medical and police. 700 vehicles going in and out of there speedily, they say speedy in their own, you know, verbiage here, is a concern to mine and my fellow residents in our neighborhood. And the, on their site plan itself, it has no additional, I, I talked about the parking. They have no additional parking for the big rigs, buses, people going camping. And so I see those additional vehicles that'll probably be either going out onto or from Countrywood Lane, which would be additional headlining into the residence at that location. I would hope that the planning commission would put a lot of these considerations and concerns of the, of our neighborhood and, and think about it because we did not ever expect McDonald's to be worth planning to be located at this time. Thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, my name's Jim Boy, I also live on Countrywood. I think the one thing that hasn't really been emphasized is the amount of traffic that I think this will possess, or sorry, provide in addition to on that exit that goes towards the, that house right there. Basically, if you live on the east side of Escalon, south of First Street, your fastest way, this location is gonna be on Countrywood. If you live north of First Street, you can take First Street McHenry. Otherwise, they're gonna cut straight down Santa Fe, across Countrywood. And then everyone who goes there, they're not gonna want to go back out to McHenry, they're gonna cut right back onto Countrywood and go back to where they came. And so I understand the traffic flow of the parking lot design is that people are gonna come in on McHenry and they're gonna go out on McHenry. But there's a lot of people on the east side of Escalon who are gonna get to that location on Countrywood and they're gonna want to go back on Countrywood. So I think that no matter how the parking lot's designed, you're not gonna prevent people from doing that because it's a lot easier to pull on the Countrywood than it is to pull onto McHenry. That's all I have, thank you.
My name is Ronnie Van Dyke, I live in 1481 Winterbrook. I'm not of the Countrywood hood. And based on the, the requirements or what's bestowed upon you guys as far as making your decisions, I understand emotional rationale isn't exactly part of that based on the attorney's comments earlier. You just have to look at the plan, you have to look at how it impacts traffic, you have to look at how it impacts the neighborhood. I would say that this design is not beneficial, mainly because if, if they had considered the neighborhood and the, the traffic flow, they possibly would have not had that Countrywood entrance or exit and flipped the entire drive, driveway serving line, all of that to the, the southwest corner of that parcel and, and blocked any, any access on that side. I understand the need for delivery or fire trucks as they require a certain route, certain turn radiuses and whatnot. But the layout, if adjusted with the property size that it is, is conducive to, to meeting that, keeping the traffic on McHenry, keeping the, the lights and, and a lot of the concerns that the citizens have of a lead, not on a way, but a lead. So what I just want to say is based on the plan that's presented, I don't think it's right. So if there's an opportunity to push it back, make sure that it's right, I think that's, that's an opportunity that should be taken. Also, I think in the future, looking at the traffic flow on Countrywood might be something that needs to be looked at from somewhere else also, as far as what the city can do to defend that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Kate Van Dreyf, I live on Deborah Circle. Been a resident here for about two years. Used to be a police officer here for five years, was living in Burbank. And two years ago, my family and I decided to move back to Escalon because this is home for me. I was born and raised here. We found a beautiful home on Deborah Circle, great neighborhood, a clean neighborhood. I don't think it's been addressed yet, but I haven't really talked about the trash that McDonald's might distribute as far as when they dump their trash. The last thing I wanted to use is a McDonald's cheeseburger. The last thing I wanted to use is a McDonald's cheeseburger wrapper flowing down our street. I just, it's not a good look for this neighborhood. I love our neighborhood, this is my home, probably for the rest of my life. I love living here. The other thing too, it's been addressed by multiple people, the traffic flow on Countrywood is just going to escalate, it's going to be, I just feel bad for the people on Countrywood with all the vehicles that they're going to have to deal with, even more so now with this being a possibility. I know from where we're at, we have to cross a crosswalk to get to the park where my kids play, and the last thing I need is for a drunk driver to run a stop sign and hit my kids on the crosswalk, go into McDonald's, or rushing, a parent rushing to get their kid food or breakfast before school to try to get to McDonald's on Countrywood. That would be detrimental to my family. Basically, long story short, I'm all for putting McDonald's in Escalon, that's great. A different location, much better. On the highway, be a perfect spot. I know it would suck for the owner of Hula's, but that lot across from Big Boy, across from the Bonnies, that big dirt lot there, I think it would be a perfect location for McDonald's right there. I don't know if it's been looked at or if it's been addressed, but that's just my opinion. And that's all I have to say.
All right.
Anne Felber, I live at the corner of Swanson and Countrywood, so I live real close. And I know our big concern is obviously what everyone else is concerned about is traffic. Countrywood and Swanson right there, we battle every day, people just to get to stop at the stop sign. So, you know, we all have young, young kids that go out and play, and we're constantly watching now. I can't imagine what it's going to be like when you've got people, like you said, they're trying to get their kids food, they're trying to get there in the morning, it's already congested, so I can't imagine what it's going to be like when we have a McDonald's in there. We all are for McDonald's, we just want it to be somewhere else. We weren't expecting it in our neighborhood. And I don't, I know that they said they weren't sure if it was going to be 24 hours or normal hours or whatever, but even like when Dollar General closes, when Marvell closes, they still have to clean, like they got to clean their parking lots, they have to clean up all the trash, so it might be closed for everybody else, but this neighborhood's going to hear it all night long. I mean, we hear them cleaning Marvell's parking lot till like 11, 12 o'clock at night. So that's kind of where we're just like, it's not going to stop for us, it's going to stop for Escalon, but it's not going to stop for this neighborhood. So that's kind of where our main concern is. So just maybe take that into consideration. There is an elderly couple that do live right across the street, and I mean, everybody works in this neighborhood, we're not all old, so everyone's got, you know, random hours, some are working days, some are working nights, so maybe just take all of these things into consideration when you guys do or don't approve this. So, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Dennis Grasspointer, and I'm an owner-operator for McDonald's, and I might be able to bring some clarity to some of the questions about some of the things. Boy, I do hear what the people have to say. As a franchisee, as a person who owns a business in a community, you always want to do things that don't become detrimental to the community. I was asked to come to speak today on behalf of McDonald's and bring the local businessperson's perspective to the site. You ask about the dual lane drive-throughs. The dual lane will remove the cars off the premises at a substantially faster rate. You have a single lane drive-through, you have one person or one car that cannot make a decision, then all the cars are stuck there. So we're able to move that through. So there was a, there is an actual applied logic to it. The grease interceptor, the grease interceptor, I guess will have some sense of odor, but it's not something that permeates more than about 10 or 12 feet past the interceptor, because I've been there when we pump them out. You know, they're about nine feet below, we drop a hose down into a 20-foot tank, we pump up from the bottom up. Lighting, you want to be complimentary to the neighborhood, and we can adjust for that, and we will do that. The drive lanes and the lights facing the neighbors, that can be addressed through landscaping, far better than a wall, but when you do the landscaping, it's not perfect. You're going to get some light intrusion through that, through those hedges or whatever is put there. And there's a trade-off between safety and security and visibility there that you have to address. I operate some stores in small towns like Waterford, Hillmar, Angels Camp, and we deal with some of these same, very similar things about traffic and safety. On the side street of Countrywood, you know, I'm listening and I'm thinking, if you don't put a driveway there, you're going to get people that possibly will park next to the sidewalk and hop out of their car and try to come into the McDonald's. And if you don't put an entrance there, there's going to be people that are going to run down, drive down that road thinking they can get into the McDonald's. Truck circulation, that can be addressed, but I don't, I only operate one store that, in Ripon, that has a dead-end parking lot. It's really tough, tough on the guests, tough on the locals, and I don't think it's safe for fire and health of the customers. One jam up of traffic on McHenry Avenue, and then that becomes a locked island, that parking lot does. As for operations in a town like this, my traditional time is, my employees arrive to work about 4:30 in the morning, we open the doors about 5:00 or 5:30, we're open until 11:00 at night. That's kind of basically what happens there. You got any other questions, I can, I can try to answer them, but I think that, I think McDonald's has a history of trying to work and mitigate this. I heard early on this evening that the site isn't a, it's zoned for this kind of business. So that's the only reason they're here, is because it's zoned for that. How do we modify it? That's fine. I would believe today, if I was operating the store here in Escalon, that 80% to 90% of my customers are coming off of McHenry. I don't know about the people that wind through the neighborhood, and they do do that. They wind through the neighborhood to get the quickest access. I'm not sure how many cars that would be, but I would guess, without that factor, I would guess about 15% of the cars would be coming off of McHenry down Countrywood into the restaurant. I don't have any sense of how many would come out of the neighborhood that way. So, that concludes my comments. Thanks.
Anyone else? Robbie, come on back up.
All right, just a couple of clarifications, some of the stuff that's come out. The drive-through speakers, just, again, I've done work for many fast food restaurants. McDonald's is the only one that I've seen where the equipment is so intelligent, it adapts to what's happening in the time of day, and the cars, and the audible noises around it. So later in the evening, when there's not a lot of cars in the drive-through, you don't have a lot of ambient noise doing it, the speaker volume's going to tone down. Same thing with light flooding and the menu boards and the overhead lights, they will dim at certain times just based on ambient, what's happening around. So that was one just clarification. Again, not that's going to change anyone's opinion as far as what it's doing, but just gives a little more clarity. Big rigs, again, hearing the stuff based on O'Reilly's, the one thing, again, why we designed that driveway off Countrywood, is so the big rigs doing deliveries aren't trying to find a way to do that. If there's only one driveway on Escalon, imagine that driver trying to back that truck up on McHenry in the mornings, that's going to be way worse. And to be honest, I doubt engineering's going to approve it, but again, we could see what they want to say. Speed bumps, I know there was one comment from one of the public about us not wanting to do it based on a distance and speed. That wasn't us, that was city engineering direct. So I just wanted to clarify that that did not come from us, that was from the traffic or the city engineer. Traffic study, again, we haven't been required, certain areas will require it if they deem it that it's going to be beneficial to prove a point. In this case, they haven't. My assumption is they haven't, because they don't see it impacting what's going to happen from a decision standpoint. And then RV boat parking, again, it goes back, originally, we looked at this lot, we were looking at the whole property, so we could have designed this thing to stage RV parking, boat parking, and we, what it is and what we wanted to do from a neighborhood standpoint, we specifically did not do that. We tightened up as tight as we can east to west, gave as much property back to the other parcel so that we could avoid that. And again, yeah, there might be people that try to park on Countrywood, but ultimately, the small lot hopefully just deters them, and they just keep going down the street to a more user-friendly trailer parking or RV parking site. So, just a couple of clarifications, and appreciated. Thanks again.
All right. Anyone else? Come on up.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Rosalind Ball, and I live in Countrywood. I share the same sentiments that most of my neighbors have spoken up regarding plans, and my question to you is, if you guys have already made a decision and this is going in, would you be willing to have a no parking sign on Countrywood? Because we all know how it gets in the summertime. Everybody comes through here from the Bay Area, excuse me, Modesto, and they want to, they go to the mountains, they will see a McDonald's and say, oh, we're going to stop here, they're going to park their boats and RVs and stuff, and there's not going to be very much parking in the parking lot, so they're going to come through Countrywood and want to park down that road. And are you willing to make that exit off of Countrywood a one-way, a one-way entry, or excuse me, entrance? So that they would, if they're going to use Countrywood to come in, they would have to go out McHenry, not out that exit off of Countrywood. And they are going to, I mean, everybody uses Google, and we know how it gets during that intersection at 120, it's busy, they're going to be at McDonald's, and they're going to say, oh, we can cut through Countrywood, go down St. John and hit Vine to get back on 120 through that way. So, my question to you is, if that's a possibility to, if you've made up your decision, if that, if this does go in, to make that no parking there, in a one-way entry and exit.
To answer your question, no, we haven't made our decision, that's why we're doing the public hearing, to receive input from all of you.
That's what I would like to see, if it does go in, is a no parking, so people don't just, I would hate to see a lot of people just bringing their RVs in, we all see homeless people coming in, cars break down, they decide that's where they're going to stay. I don't, I don't want to see that for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey there, I'm Michelle, and I live also off Countrywood in the new neighborhood. Countrywood is already very busy, it's very narrow, the corners like come out, so with traffic coming this way and stuff, it's hard for people, it's like we almost have to pull to the side, and if people are going to park right on the side of Countrywood, it makes, basically makes it a one-lane road, because most of us can't maneuver around parked cars. And so I just hope you guys take it in consideration that with the neighborhood there and coming in, traffic, and people leaving and stuff, it gets a little chaotic already, so adding a McDonald's there is only going to add more chaos to our neighborhood in the entrance and exiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't worry, you'll still have an opportunity, so if you think of something. All right, at this point, we will open it up. Yes, ma'am?
Just make sure you're going to open it up to anybody online.
Gotcha.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
At this point, we will open it up for folks online. I will call you by name, or your username on the screen, so that we know who's who. Can we do that? Click on the people.
We typically haven't done that in the past, we just ask for...
Okay, I'm just trying to avoid a free throw.
Yeah.
There's only 11 people on, so it shouldn't be too bad.
Shouldn't be too bad, okay.
Whatever you normally do. Okay, so first, we will hear from Ashley Walker.
I guess we should clarify, maybe not everyone who's attending online currently wants to speak, so maybe what we could have them do is unmute if they'd like to speak, and then announce themselves.
Well, the first person that's unmuted is Eskie Citizen, so Eskie Citizen, please share your comments, if you intend to share some comments. Okay.
It might be easier just to ask, they might just be all listening, just to ask in general if anybody has any comments.
Okay, does anyone online have any comments that they would like to share? Hearing none, what about in the chat?
So we did have some comments that were posted. The first comment was asking if the entrance off Countrywood would be for a fire truck egress as well, which we would need to confirm with fire department if they would need that or not. We had another comment mentioning that Oakdale's McDonald's has a mid-block store with an entrance and exit from 108, and it seems to work just fine. Not sure that we need an entrance from Countrywood, why not In-N-Out on McHenry? And then we had another comment indicating that the McDonald's on McHenry Avenue was off of Bowen Avenue. And then we had the last comment thanking the commissioners and that they appreciate you. They are against the McDonald's, also due to location not being conducive to the traffic that fast food brings. Thank you.
All right, well, if there's no one else online, come on up, Brittany.
Okay, I didn't mention this last time, but when you guys make this decision, take into that neighborhood, I don't know if any of you have young children right now, or grandchildren, or if you ever come to our neighborhood during Halloween, like we are such a great neighborhood, there's so many kids, it's insane. Now picture that neighborhood in about 10 years, because I promise you, a lot of these neighbors wouldn't have bought right behind Taco Bell, we didn't expect this to happen there. I don't know who's going to purchase our homes in the future, but I promise you, our property values are probably going to plummet from this, because personally, I love McDonald's, but I don't want to live right by one, I don't want my kids, and even knowing how traffic is, I, I'm from Escalon, I knew what Countrywood would be like, I knew the roads were pretty but small, I knew that I was going to have to take my time getting In-N-Out. I, I think you really need to factor that in, in all this, like what you're going to do to this beautiful, young, young neighborhood, young kids, young neighborhood. Thank you.
All right.
I'm not an engineer, and I don't know any of that stuff, but I just wanted to throw out there an idea that maybe nobody's thought about, but I don't know if that center divide is needed right there in the middle of the parking lot, but if you did remove those four parking spaces and removed that center median, I'm, looks like it would be a huge circle for a semi-truck to just find, my husband is a semi-truck driver, and he hauls heavy equipment, so very big loads, and I'm sure he could flip around just fine in that parking lot. So, just something to throw out there, too.
Thank you. Any other comment? All right, hearing none, let's bring it back to the planning commission.
Would you mind formally closing the public hearing?
Yes, we will close the public hearing at 8:30 PM. All right, start with you, Commissioner Castellanos.
I have a couple of questions for staff. Countrywood, when it was developed, what type of street was it designed for?
So, Countrywood is fairly long, it starts on McHenry Avenue and goes to St. John, and it changes as a It starts on McHenry Avenue and goes to St. John and it changes designation along the way. So this section of Countrywood Lane from McHenry to Swanson is a collector street. Once you kind of make the jog down Swanson and then pick up Countrywood again. Countrywood from Swanson to Sophie is a local street. And then from Sophie to St. John, it turns back into a collector street.
A collector street means what? For the benefit of the audience, what's a collector street mean?
So the streets are based on traffic usage and there's kind of tiers. So arterial like McHenry is your highest level busiest, can accommodate the most traffic. Collector is the level below that. Minor collector is below that. Local is like your smallest neighborhood street.
If you, if you want me, I looked up the definition between like a collector road.
No, just, just, just to give the audience.
Say, give you a general.
I heard some comments that there was some of the, the corners were kicked out. Aren't, isn't that kind of a calming feature for? And is that on the collector road portion or is it on the neighborhood portion?
It's on the collector portion moving into the local portion. So right where it, right where it hits, is that Swanson?
Swanson.
Countrywood, just Swanson, yeah.
It pops out on both corners. And so, yeah, that's the calming measure for when you're making the turns either direction.
Is there any possibility of somehow, because I heard a lot of concerns about track, speed of traffic and regardless of McDonald comes in or not, that's still a long stretch from McHenry to St. John's. Is there any thought the city maybe put in some, some sort of speed bumps in some portions of that neighborhood where I see the attorney one.
I don't ever want to cut you off. Just that, that may be outside the scope of what's really at issue and what's been agendaized today. So I just, yeah, I mean, always feel free to bring it back.
Addressing some of the concerns with the speed and all the other things. Okay. Right now, I don't have any other comments.
Commissioner Engel.
I don't have any additional questions or comments.
All right, Commissioner Willis.
None at this time.
Of course I do. So a couple of things, and we're probably going to have to reopen the public hearing because actually I would like to reopen the public hearing at 8:43 and I would like Robbie and Deanna to please come back up. Don't worry, you're not in trouble.
I'm always in trouble.
So I have a couple of thoughts. Obviously, you've heard the biggest concern is with what I tried to bring up and that's that entrance and exit off of Countrywood. Solution, and I, I can't speak for you, but a solution that I was just thinking of is if that drive aisle is needed for deliveries, would McDonald's consider putting in a click to enter gate that only the delivery drivers would have access to as well as the fire department? And that would keep traffic from going in and out of Countrywood. But it also helps with the delivery access issue and access for the fire department. And it helps the neighbors behind you and it helps the elderly folks in having the headlights into their bedroom.
Speaking for McDonald's, you know, we, we are always willing to make considerations that as long as, you know, if it's something that, you know, the city or building permit approval, it's something that they would require and they would allow, you know, meets code, we would consider that as an opportunity, as something. I can't say we've ever done that before, a locking gate.
Not saying a locking gate, I'm saying a click to enter gate. So for full transparency, I, I'm a construction project manager. And on the, I've done fire station projects where there's a, there's a gate and the fire department has access and it's just a garage clicker, but it's limited access. So you're limiting access in and out of that Countrywood exit. It protects the residents along Countrywood and at the same time achieves the delivery issue that we talked about, which is really, it sounds like that's the primary need for that entrance and exit.
I would say if that, like as a last resort option, it would be something we would consider. I wouldn't say no. Definitely would want to make sure it works and figure out how that, how would that work with, you know, then looking at a gate and whatnot, you know, definitely would consider it. I don't want to, I'm not saying no. Yeah.
What do you think, Robbie?
I go with what the client says. Their operation at the end of the day, not mine. Site functionality wise, then, yeah, I don't see where it wouldn't work. I think it'd help with, again, neighborhood concern as far as what's happened on Countrywood. If we did that, I definitely would want to look at the drive-through exit onto McHenry because like you talked about, we won't be able to get into. But if we can widen it, if we did that, I think we would definitely have to widen the exit on McHenry because right now it's one in, one out. I think we would have to look at going one in, two out, possibly right turn lane, then a left turn lane. Because that's the only way you're going to get that kind of volume leaving, but.
And just for comparison, I mean, the traffic on Highway 108 in Oakdale is significantly more than what's on McHenry. And they do it with one driveway. And I understand it's a different store, but it's a solution to the problem that we're facing.
Yeah, again, like if we did it the way it's proposed and we find out it's a problem, we bring it back to add that second lane. So, or the second wider driveway. But again, if you do a click to enter, again, operationally, it's something we'd have to look at just from a delivery driver, making sure whoever's delivering is the same driver every day that has that click. The alternative is that they have to a keypad as a secondary option. And then just figuring out how we stop anyone that is going to try to go that way. And again, I guess they'll learn in the long run. Don't go all the way down that because you're going to get stuck at the gate at the other end. You can't get through.
Right.
So either signage or something there to let them know, don't go there. I don't think you want to gate it at both ends just because that's going to become problematic.
Correct.
And I would, I would also say, I, I know most of the people in the audience here are speaking, you know, against the project, but I know there's probably a lot of people within the neighborhood that may be more welcoming to it. And then you would be restricting their access to their home, you know, exit as well. So I would consider that as well too. You know, it's all hypothetical speaking, but I can't imagine nobody in that neighborhood is going to go to McDonald's. I would be bummed if I lived over there and I had to go a little bit longer around the corner to go to it. But we'll do whatever makes it work for the community.
Similarly to that, related to site, regarding folks that, you know, say somebody is bringing an RV or something and decides that they're going to try to park on Countrywood. And this would be obviously at the discretion of the city engineer, but it seems to me like posting some signage that says local access only, local residents only, et cetera, et cetera, along Countrywood. At least in my previous discussions with Chief Flores, he's explained to me that as long as the California Vehicle Code section is referenced on the sign, anyone in that neighborhood could call the police department and have that vehicle ticketed or towed because they're non-compliant with the signage.
Yeah, we actually have something similar like to that in Ripon. Near where the river is, there's a public, small public parking lot. People often go to the river. There's the green bridge there. A lot of people do photo shoots out there. My personal photographer actually got ticketed once. They had those exact signs on the street that said it was only for resident access parking and because they wanted people to park in the actual parking lot, which overflows sometimes. And in the matter of 40 minutes, she had a ticket on her thing, you know, to discourage people from parking on that. I think the woman that suggested the no parking or even your suggestion along that road is a wonderful idea. You know, definitely don't want to encourage RV parking on the street. I think it's a great idea.
Paint those curbs red and I mean, and somebody parks there, gets towed, it's going to get their attention really fast.
Yeah, from, from our side, at least on the engineering side, it's, we're not opposed to no parking there or red. It's, it's really up to whatever the city engineer or fire department or you as the commission wants to put on that. We have no objection either way.
Talk to us briefly about the, the screening that you mentioned, screening the driveway from public view, if you will. How does that work?
Let's talk to him.
Are, are we talking about basically just like the, either a landscape screen or?
Yes. What can we, what can we as the planning commission consider as a buffer? So that if, if one of our residents is driving down Countrywood, like I said earlier, they're not looking over and seeing a long line of cars in the driveway.
Yeah, typically the, the biggest one that normally is asked for is basically just looking at the landscape plan, the planning department reviewing that landscape plan to make sure there's plenty of dent screening, whether it's hedged, whether it's something else along Countrywood. You can go a step further just because again, some people will push back on the landscape a little bit and want something a little more solid. So we'll come through and do a three foot high CMU wall, something like that. You can't do a six foot high there. It's just, I don't even think the city will allow it just because of proximity to sidewalks and visibility. But a three foot one at least stops any cars that are in the drive-through lane headlights from projecting in beyond the drive-through lane.
So.
Sometimes again, certain people in certain businesses that operate, again, I don't operate one, so I can't tell you. But when you put, start to put a three foot CMU wall or hard masonry wall there, sometimes you start to get a little bit of security concern just because you normally will have landscaping on the other side and then it becomes kind of a habitat for vagrants to hang out. So some cities don't want the CMU wall, some do, some want more landscape, some don't. It's purely up to you as the commissioner.
So Deanna, what have you seen? Like if I'm looking at this plan, see where note number 10 is along the north side with the easement, that whole run? What have you seen along in that area that would create, could create a buffer?
Exactly what Robbie just said. I'm building a store in Bakersfield right now. It's in a very busy, huge intersection and we have one of those for three foot CMU block wall. There will be some bark landscaping and, you know, desert friendly plants there. We've also done a lot of, you know, pure landscaping like bio swell sort of things for, you know, rain catch basins and, and whatnot. You know, it's, it's really, a lot of times the city dictates, you know, what kind of landscaping, plants. You know, we hire a landscape architecture. It's really what you guys want to see and, you know, just personally knowing how you guys have already developed McHenry and, you know, what look you're going for, you know, you want it to blend in with the community. So, you know, those are the two main options. I wouldn't suggest putting a bunch of trees or anything like that. They tend to root up the sidewalks and create bigger problems for the city later on. But, you know, the CMU block wall, we already factored in, you know, our thoughts, a CMU block wall at the end of our parcel, you know, just considering what the other businesses had already done to screen them from the residence view. So we're already considering that in our plan. You know, if you guys were going to make us do it, so if you wanted us to do it on, you know, along the, the Countrywood Lane and around the front somewhat, we would do that too. We just want it to be visually appealing to everyone.
My last question, and that is, has McDonald's Corporation ever, ever made any off-site improvements that to better enhance the quality of life for the neighbors? For example, it was brought up about the, the, the long distance from McHenry to Swanson and having speed humps or something to break that up. Now, I understand that that's not, technically it's an off-site improvement, not related to your project, but it improves the quality of, if, if McDonald's were, if this project were to move forward and you were to do that to improve the quality of life, to break up those traffic flows on Countrywood. Have you ever seen that in any other municipalities?
You know, directly in front of our property typically, we're, we're always, you know, whatever's conditionally asked of us with our plans, we tend to do as long as it's not, you know, building roller rink or something. You know, we oftentimes are, you know, making improvements to, if it's in a shopping center, you know, entrances off of, you know, drive aisles and sidewalks and, you know, the list can go on and on. You know, being a big company, you know, it's asked of us oftentimes. The speed bump was asked of us and we absolutely agreed that we would do it. I think the city engineer maybe didn't, at least maybe the placement of wherever everyone was looking at, it didn't make sense. But we are definitely not opposed to, to making it safe. I have, I have kids myself, I get it, you know? Sounds like there's a lot of speeding, existing issues and, you know, people just drive crazy, unfortunately.
And personally, again, I don't see an issue with it one way or another, but I'm not a city traffic engineer that understands the class, everything else. So ultimately, we would say, mission, if you want to condition us for it based on city engineer approval and requirement, then that's something, again, conditions approval that, again, being a bigger company, we're not a small mom and pop shop, so those costs inherently just are something that we're used to absorbing going in a jurisdiction.
Okay. All right, thank you. With that, we will reclose the public hearing at 8:56 and bring it back to planning commission. Or comments. Let's start with Commissioner Engel.
So, excuse me, I think this is for staff. It sounds like there's a few things to work on and there's not a designated solve. So it doesn't sound like there's an ability to give a conditional approval. So would that push to a continuance to work on those additional items? So there were a lot of items that were proposed from the gate to widening the entrance and exit from McHenry. It doesn't sound like there's anything, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but definitive from the commission that they'd like to add as a condition of approval. So that would move it to a continuance. Sorry.
So you, you have two options. I've seen it done where you, you know, put your heads together, you come up with your, basically your mandatory, here's what we're going to add to the conditions of approval. And the way I started to kind of write, as you were talking about that condition, let's just take the one that you were just mentioning, you could write it where it's, it's sort of contingent on sign off from the city engineer. So if you were talking about a speed bump, let's say you were going to add a condition that said they're going to have to add one speed bump on Countrywood, but subject to the discretion of the city engineer. If it, if it pencils out at all, I mean, I think it doesn't always satisfy members of the community fully because you're not putting it in brick and mortar, but you're, what you're saying is we're putting this condition and it's going to be subject to the comments that we may receive back from staff. Or you can continue, have those discussions and then come back with a fully newly formed set of conditions that already have that buy-off. So I've seen it done both ways. It, you know, it depends on if you have buy-in already from city engineering staff or not. Here where we don't necessarily have them to come in and say, yeah, yeah, totally doable or totally not doable. You could go either way. You could condition it contingently or you could continue the hearing, come back, say next month or whenever the applicant was free and have the new conditions ready at that time.
Good question. So if we put in a condition that the engineers got to approve, I want to make sure I understand this, and he doesn't, then what we just approved is then denied or?
Every other condition would remain active. What you would want to do at that point is bring the, or the applicant back in if, if they had a problem, right? If, so if you, if it was going to be something where there was going to be an issue created because the resolution of that condition fell apart, which I think is why some people tend towards pushing out the hearing so that you can just come back with a set that's been approved already. But you can, you can always bring a CUP back for modification of the conditions, to add a new one, to take one out, something like that. So what you probably would want to do at that point is bring the CUP back and change that condition to meet the, the changing need.
Was your question answered, Commissioner Engel?
It was, thank you.
Commissioner Castellanos.
Well, I've, I've heard.
Well, I've heard a lot of suggestions on making some changes and I've heard the applicants being pretty willing to make those changes. This is a tough one. And now I'm just, I'll listen to other comments.
All right. Commissioner Willis.
I do like the thought of a McDonald's coming into town and the city benefiting from the avenue that would be produced. I do like the flexibility, I guess, that Mr. Priest and Ms. Uker are evidencing that we might be able to make some changes, but I still listened to the people. I hear problems with the circulation. The project is not designed for the privacy of the residents. I have a concern about the children in the area. We've, we've got an allegiance to the community, more so than an allegiance to McDonald's. If we could, and you talked about making no parking on countrywood, I can see people making the turn and then, oh, I can't park here. What am I going to do? How am I going to get out of here? And there's going to be a jam because people aren't familiar with the road. It just seems like there are a lot of things to work out to make this palatable, to make it workable and that's where I am.
So I don't know if we can do this legally. I'm just going to throw it out there for what it's worth. But in the design and construction world, there's what's called a design charrette. And in the design charrette, you basically have the owner, you have the people who are going to use the building, you're going to have XYZ. You all sit in this big room and say, I like this. No, I don't like this. And architects drawn figures and I sat through one for four hours today. And I believe that the way that this is presented to the planning commission currently, I cannot support because there are many tweaks that need to happen before I, as a planning commissioner, can give my approval. So actually I'm looking at use council. Is there any way legally that a public workshop can be held about this? Where the neighbors can come to the workshop, McDonald's can come, Robbie can come, Robbie, I'm assuming you're the civil engineer or the architect. Or all the above, and Robbie can come with some of his friends to the public workshop and we get the neighborhood there and say, okay, I have a piece of property. There were ideas that were brought up at the planning commission. Do you like this idea or not like this idea? Scratch that. And then you just kind of go through and make this checks and balances. The community is heard and then once that checks and balances and the tweaking, if you will, is adjusted. Granted, it's going to take some open minds by our residents. It's going to take some open minds by Robbie and his team. It's going to take some open minds from Deanna representing McDonald's Corporation. But that's how projects work in Escalon. This community is so strong and we work together and we want to make sure that our voice is heard. And so what I'm proposing to the commission is tabling this and taking it back to a public workshop. Robbie's got plenty of items on his list to consider and then having a public workshop. See if those items can be worked out and the public can come and attend the public workshop, listen, get ideas and everybody sharing. And then once there's, not everybody's going to agree. I totally get that, but at least if there's some sort of framework that, okay, something that we can consider, we all agreed to some semblance of this. Then at that point, it comes back to the planning commission and the planning commission will vote on the conditional use permit.
As I'm hearing is you'd maybe like something a little more informal, like a round table where you've got maybe a whiteboard with plans posted on it. You can literally be drawing on them, taking comments back and forth, not so much this formal sort of public hearing setting. Is that, is that what you're after?
Well, it's a little, yeah, a little less formal. I mean, we've heard from numerous folks and the way that I've seen it is, and this is something that we could consider at the, at the community center where we have different pictures and different views showing up. And every person that comes gets a thing of sticky notes or posted notes and they get a pen and write, I like this, I don't like this. And just slap it on there. And then the design team takes a look at it and reviews it and says, okay. Brittany, I'm picking on you because you're the only name I can remember, but so Brittany, tell us why you like this idea. Why didn't you like this idea? And Brittany and her husband's voice is heard and at the same time McDonald's is heard. And so it achieves the outcome, the best outcome for both parties.
Yeah, if the consensus of the commission is to go towards something like that, what we could do is continue this hearing and we can continue it not to a date certain, we can just sort of put it on the back burner and see after the workshop how that goes. So you would continue the hearing, you wouldn't make a final decision tonight, then you would just re-notice a public workshop, like you said, for a roundtable discussion of the type that you're describing. So if that's, that's one option that is available to the commission, you can vote to continue this hearing, have that kind of workshop, invite all members of the public. It's notice, just like a regular meeting, but you can hold it in a different location with different resources available and do it that way and then bring it back to the commission after.
Now your comment is my concern is soon we're going to have two people off the planning commission. This person here is recruiting himself, so there's only going to be two commissioners. We can't do anything. That's my concern.
That's a fair point.
So then it would probably fall into not being addressed until February or March, when we have commissioners on board. A full, a full commission.
But I think there's, hold on one sec. But there's so much, so many other players that we need input from such as.
No, I understand, but if we put this off, we have to wait until we can have a quorum.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's my concern. We won't have a quorum.
All right, let's reopen the public hearing a third time at nine oh eight. Deanna, please come up.
I just had a question about your idea. So I haven't ever actually done that before. It's usually, you know, through planning and whatnot, but how would that work as far as like biased? I would imagine the only people that are really going to come from the resident side are going to be people that are against the project. How, how would we get feedback from the community that wants us here? Is it like a mandatory, I mean, you can't mandate that the whole city is there. So how do you get the whole village to agree and have, you know, unbiased discussions, you know, where, where it's actually, you know, a constructive conversation, you know? You know, we want to be here, obviously, you know, and if, if the main source of contention is countrywood, you know, my suggestion would be, you know, let us, let us go back to the drawing board and see how we can make the site. If we can make it work, it's not going to be ideal. It's not going to have great flow. Probably going to be some, you know, growing pains for everyone. But if we can find a way to eliminate the countrywood drive aisle, you know, that the fire department building traffic would approve. I, I personally think that that would probably be a quicker process. Now, as far as your comment, Stephen, Mr. Castellanos, as far as people exiting in the timeline for that, for in December right now, when would, when would we be able to revisit the planning approval?
Question.
The seats can be filled, yeah.
That's, I don't know. I mean, that's.
March, the earliest would be March.
So this is just an idea. Let's get input from the neighbors, see what, what you guys think. I mean, are you so adamant that you say it'd just be a waste of our time? We're not interested. We're just saying, heck no, we don't want it in our neighborhood and go pound sand McDonald's? Or is this an opportunity where you think that if McDonald's went back and took some of these ideas that we've been sharing and your input and this discussion was tabled for a future meeting? Would you be willing to come back to another planning commission meeting and just listen to their ideas? I mean, honestly, this process may take one, two, I don't know how many meetings it's going to take, but that's what this commission is about is to work together because that's what we're here to do. So.
And my concern is that, you know, that if they don't, if people don't want us here and it's going to be a matter, you know, a full, you know, I don't want to keep wasting everyone's time if every suggestion you guys have given us, we agree to do. And we still get a denial. So what are we doing?
Right. Well, let's, let's get some input from folks.
What kind of?
Can they state their name again?
Yes.
James, sorry, countrywood lane. What type of neighborhoods is the McDonald's in Ripon and the McDonald's in Oakdale in?
I believe that that's, it's this, I don't know, I'm not a planning commissioner.
They need to have, they need to have a discussion.
Just Peter.
Yes, Peter, so to answer your question is no, I've talked to numerous neighbors in that neighborhood. Escalon is a small town, people talk, nobody that lives in that neighborhood wants McDonald's on their front doorstep. No one. I have not talked to a single person that's agreed to have that McDonald's there or wants that McDonald's in their neighborhood. Flat out, no. And they obviously don't want to make adjustments. We looked at the McDonald's in Oakdale. There's two entrances to a main road, which is a lot busier than McHenry and they obviously don't want to do that. So I get they're saying that we're giving them pushback, but they're giving us pushback. We do not want them here.
Peter, I think you're misspoken. What we said was they would go, so they, they have a whole list of things to consider that we've brought up. What Deanna asked is if they go through and it's going to take some growing pains and some redesign and some tweaking of the design, possibly eliminating the entrance and exit off of countrywood, widening McHenry Avenue, all of these different things we're talking about. All of, if they make a concession, if they go through and take all this input is the opinion of the audience and those online, will that be enough? Or are you just saying flat out, no?
I'm, I'm, I don't know. Everyone I have talked to, I have family that lives in the neighborhood, I have friends, very close friends. We all moved to this area to be close together. Everyone I've talked to, flat out, do not want McDonald's.
So this is probably off topic, but what would be good for that site?
Any sort of commercial business with what they talked about the last meeting, sleepy hours, you know, the nine to five, the, you know, one or two cars coming in every hour or so, two hours. I'd be okay with office buildings, you know, where people come work and then leave. A fast food restaurant where it's seven hundred and what, seventy something cars a day? In the entrance to our neighborhood, put yourself in our position. Would you want that at your front door?
So I will tell you that that property has been zoned commercial since at least two thousand and five.
Okay.
And, and me speaking with staff, this is the first proposal that has come for that property in two thousand and five. My concern as a planning commissioner, let's just say, and this is off topic, so counsel, tell me to shut up, please, if I go off topic. But my concern is that, let's just say, this is denied. And there is an extreme amount of pressure from the state of California for high density housing. And what happens if high density housing comes into that lot? And we are pressured as the planning commission for super high density housing. Now you're having apartment buildings. It's not seven hundred cars a day, but it's major apartment buildings because the state of California is putting all of that pressure on the city.
I would take my chances. I would rather stare at a dirt lock lot coming into my neighborhood than McDonald's. Okay.
Well, it won't be a dirt lock. It'll be multifamily.
Yeah, like apartment buildings, multiple apartment buildings. We, we brought it up at the last meeting that you could probably fit ten to twelve apartment buildings and.
That's a hypothetical though, right? That's not, nothing is in the plan. There's nothing coming.
Well.
That fight up when that comes.
We have passed the housing element as a planning commission and the state is paying attention to that housing element. And so my fear is that the state is going to want to force force the city and the planning commission to say, okay, now you have to do high density residential.
Right, but there's several alternative locations for stuff like that throughout the city. This, this lot is not an end all be all for a high rise building. There's plenty of opportunities out there. We don't want McDonald's. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Other thoughts or ideas?
Just to clarify, because you are a councilman, are you trying?
I'm not a councilman.
I'm saying, are you really threatening like an if or, because there, there's so many different lots in Escalon. So you're saying if that's the scenario right now, is it McDonald's or it's high density?
No, that's, no, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay, if I can jump in just quickly, I think the point that he's trying to make is it's much more difficult. The planning commission will have no say. If, if housing comes in and it's low income, the cities are prohibited from approving or denying.
Lots in Escalon that are open right now. So like.
It's where the applicant comes in, is they're limited to, right? So I think that what he's trying to say is based on the way that housing is approved versus a commercial building, it, it wouldn't even come back to the commission necessarily.
Here's my concern.
I've lived in Escalon since I was born, so nineteen ninety.
Okay.
That Taco Bell, everything, you knew where the eateries are, right? Ripon, you know where the eateries are. You know where you're going to go get gas. You know where you're going to get your fast food. It's all in one strip. There's not presidential right there.
But that area is.
I get that that's zoned for commercial, but like put in a nice restaurant, like there's not, there's, there hasn't been anything that wanted to go there. Like it has to be a McDonald's out of all things is to turn that into another. I mean, you know, that's going to do to our neighborhood. People are going to move. We've already, I have so many neighbors that have said that. They're like, this is like, I didn't choose to live by Taco Bell. I'm not going to live here. It just is what it is. I'm, I do what you want to do. We'll figure it out after, but I just keep that in mind. Like think of you guys live back there. I don't know. Talk to Mark. How's Mark feeling about this?
Well, that, but my concern is, is exactly what counsel mentioned.
Staff, can we limit the back and forth in the public hearing, please?
It's.
Chair is out of order.
Okay.
Yes, if, if we could circle back around.
Okay.
Yes, no, it's okay. I understand tensions run high, but yes, I, if we could, yeah, just circle back around to.
Well, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Andy Saunders. So I'm, I am against the McDonald's being there. So even if they did make the improvements, if you guys are dead set on it, if you guys want McDonald's there. I mean, it's zoned as commercial, I understand that. And I would want to be a part of that if that has to happen. But if it comes down to what you guys are asking for as opinion of mine, a part of the community, I don't want it there. I, if, if there is, Escalon has, we, we have literally land everywhere and we like, they're wanting to develop on our front steps. And I get it. I get that it's commercial. I've heard you guys with that, but that it's commercial and, and I, I just want to say like, I just want something that's nine to five, like there is a dental office going or medical office or something that's going right next to it. That would have been fine. Nobody would be here right now if that was the case. So just saying.
Thank you.
Oh, Jim, I'm still Jim. So some of my neighbors might be mad when I say this, but I think, I understand there is a give and take here. And I think that really what our concerns are is the effects on our neighborhood and mostly through countrywood, right? So we talked about that side entrance. For me, I just, I think it's not fair to have people leaving that countrywood entrance because those lights are going to be shining right at that house. So I think if that's a one way entrance where it only lets you, because I also think it'd be ridiculous to not let people from that neighborhood enter there. Because to have to go to McHenry, make a left and immediate left, I think that's unsafe to go out on a McHenry, never really get in the lane and then print in. But if that's a one way entrance, it's only an entrance, that would allow the trucks to come in. and it would mitigate the lights from shining on the neighbors that live right there and just bought a home in that neighborhood, which I think is fair. The other piece is I think we're really concerned with the traffic going down Countrywood Lane. And so I think there needs to be some consideration towards slowing that traffic down. We've talked about speed bumps, we've talked about whatever it is. I don't think you can rule it out, because I think if it goes in, there's going to be traffic. There's going to be additional traffic, but I think there needs to be a way to mitigate it or manage it. And I think that, to me, that, for me to be on board, that needs to be part of the proposal. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, still Jim.
Good afternoon, good evening again, Chad Rich. We do have a couple of concerns. You guys talked about the gate with the automatic gate opening. We do have the future property to the east of that location that at some point is going to have egress and entrances from Countrywood. At some point, that, when that goes in, that gate is no longer going to be a factor because they'll just start cutting through the parking lot across that commercialized area and into the backside of McDonald's from Countrywood. So I see that being a short-term fix, not a long-term, unfortunately. As well as, unless they do plan on putting some kind of wall that separates the two properties. I don't see that in the plans. I, I looked through all the sets to where that would, that could not stop that from preventing vehicles to come in, coming across the, the future project that'll be at that location. I try to be open-minded. I have prior construction experience, general contractor, so I try to look at the big picture and the future of it. I don't see it being a good fix for this location. I know there's multiple residents throughout the community that like McDonald's or may want a McDonald's in town. I, I think the location is just unfortunately not the right location for our town due to the close proximity and already the high traffic volume on Countrywood. And that's all I have to say. I think, thank you guys again for your time.
Thank you.
I just want to speak again about our favorite topic, Countrywood. You know, our double drive-through, I'm not going to go through that whole rigmarole again. You know, we do, I don't want to show all my cards, you know, but if having a single lane, we do have a tandem drive-through option where it's one lane and it has two order points on it, it's not as efficient as a double lane drive-through. It would alleviate or eliminate that outside lane, which would be probably the only lane that would be even remotely close to shining into the elderly people's bedroom window. That would literally just be where that primary lane is and we would have our canopies and drive-through. And you might see some extra stacking potentially, but you wouldn't have Countrywood, Countrywood light shining into it. I still think having that, you know, option is, is, you know, pleasant for people that live in that community and, you know, that's up to you guys all to decide what you want to do, but if our drive-through and the lights and staring at a car, you know, out their window is unpleasant. I, I, I understand that. We would consider it, it would save time with your guys' changing of positions and, or people leaving. Last thing I want to do is have to come back here in six months and however long it's going to be before we can revisit. I do want to make sure you guys want us here, that we can be constructive and, you know, we're willing to do what we need to do because we do want to be here. Did you have any questions on that?
Oh, no. Are we allowed to poll the audience?
No, not in as much as, you know, taking a general consensus from them. I think probably almost everyone in the room has come up and spoken at this point, so what I, what I would suggest is getting a feel for the consensus of the commission on that particular point. I think you've heard, you know, a fair amount on both sides, so what I would suggest is maybe an initial motion. And you can gauge support for continuing this hearing in favor of having a public workshop, and then if that motion dies, then we can move on to the next one.
Yeah.
Are you in favor? Would you be in favor of a workshop?
I've, I've never personally done one. I, I don't, I understand what you've explained. I would really want to speak with my superiors that sign my paycheck before I committed to something that I've never done before, because I don't want to say it's unheard of, but I haven't heard of it personally. That's typically what planning is for, is to kind of vet these stuff out and, you know, maybe go back and forth a bit and return essentially once hopefully, but, you know, at this, like I said, yeah.
And I can understand your concern if you go through that whole process and the only people that show up that are against it and we don't get a fair sense of the community's really looking for. Or what the commission is really looking for from the community.
Right. At the end of the day, I mean, you guys have the ability to say yes or no, you know, you can build the site. You can tell us how, you know, you would conditionally approve us to build it and, and, you know, we would do our best to, we would look at it and make sure it works, you know, we, it's just a matter really of, you know, if you don't want us here, no, nobody's going to want to spend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars and hire land use attorneys and do all the things to, only for, you know, the emotional, you know, denial. So that's all that we ask is that, you know, we are proposing to build on a commercial lot. If it's not us, it could, it could be anyone else, it could be housing, it could be anything hypothetically. Somebody's going to go there eventually, so we would love to be there. I look forward to your raises.
Thank you.
My name is Cheyenne. I just had a couple of questions. So I know that that's zoned for C2 commercial, but I'm having a hard time understanding why it's such a prime location. We have all of our food and amenities over by like the high school right there on 120 or in Escalon Bloat. So I'm a little confused as to why we're dead set on this spot. I could see like, I mean, that's, that's where everything is over there. I mean, you've got the high school, you've got football games, you've got, I mean, you're right on 120 Escalon, or, yeah, 120 Escalon Bloat or like McHenry. So I'm kind of concerned why we're so dead set on this lot next to residential. And then everyone's saying like, you know, if this doesn't go here, something's going to go here. We get that. But when I live, I live on Swanson and Countrywood and I was told I was getting residential behind me and they rezoned it to, or commercial behind me, and then lo and behold, they changed it to residential. So, I mean, you can't really sit here and say, if this doesn't go, we're going to get high-rise buildings or we're going to get something because we all know this can be changed to anything.
So let me clarify my statement for you.
I'm not holding you against it. I get your example.
So.
But I think we're not opposed to something there, we're just opposed to fast food. So like she said, if we did, you know, a medical office where it's nine to five and it has normal traffic and it's, you know, we're not getting, you know, terrible people in and out of our part, like, out of our community, we get it. We know something's coming. But we just are open to like legit business, not fast food. It's kind of where we are and we're all in the same boat, like, we do love McDonald's. I'm not going to lie, I'm probably there once a week. I got two kids. But why not put it where it belongs, which is with Taco Bell, with Burger King, with, you know, Mount Mikes, with Starbucks? That's where we see it going, like, that's going to be way more revenue than I think putting it in Countrywood and McHenry is my only. Like, like I said, that's my only concern. I know those can be rezoned, they're rezoned all the time. I was getting commercial, we got residential, which I'm way happier about, by the way, but that's all I'm saying, so.
Thank you. So before you come up, counsel and staff, can you explain the whole rezoning process? How that, how that works for our residents?
I would caution that it's, it's a bit outside the scope of what we're here for, but yes, it's, it's, it's not not a possibility, but it's just, it's something that is totally separate from taking something that is currently zoned the way it is and putting a project on it, which is what we're here for.
Okay.
So we can always re-agenda that at a future meeting.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, first of all, for your time. I did refrain initially from coming up to speak here because I did want to take the time to hear everyone's concerns.
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Emma Padilla. So my husband and I, we are the owners of the lot next door. And so, you know, although it's not direct, I think our first impression of a fast food, commercial, oh, sorry, fast food, you know, drive-through, I was a little surprised, you know, given the location in Escalon. We do have plans of, hopefully, you know, building a medical office in that area. And we just feel like it does clash a little bit with building up local small businesses in, in Escalon. And so I just wanted to echo some of the concerns that have been raised by the local residents with the location as well as the hours of operation, the flow of traffic. Yes, we will be primarily an eight to five business, but the, during those hours of operation, they are, we do voice those concerns as well. And so just wanted to echo some of that. Thank you.
Sorry, Deanna, I have another question. So, and, and, and we heard from Robbie about, you know, the the corporation looked at different sites. Are you familiar with any other sites within Escalon that were reviewed and pluses or minuses of those sites?
Yeah, they, they, there were, there were other locations. They didn't meet our screens for size, for ingress, egress. You know, for what we project for sales and payback. You know, this site was the only one that was feasible, that met our business plan to serve the city of Escalon. There were not any other ones that were available that met those needs and that made sense financially for us. You know, like I said, I, I know it seems to make sense to be where Burger King and Taco Bell are, but there isn't anything, they're not selling. I mean, the Starbucks, I know personally is kind of a nightmare to get in and out of, turning in there. You know, there's just nowhere there. And this is supposed to be a neighborhood store, it's meant for the community. So, yeah, unfortunately, this is our only option at this time. Unless you know anything about Burger King.
That's all I had. Thank you. All right, with that, we will close the public hearing again. Was there, were there any comments or anybody, before we close the public hearing, were there any additional comments from folks online?
Any new online comments?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. This is Joe Jimenez, 1970 Melissa Court. And I jumped on a little late, so I missed some of this meeting. I was in a prior meeting, but I'm sure that I'm going to echo a lot of my fellow neighbors here when I shared the concern just to having a McDonald's. I mean, just to kind of share, we moved out here in 2014 from Tracy. And, you know, when you look at a, a once upon a time small town, they just continued to grow with businesses and never changed. The streets that, you know, that were there since, you know, the eighties to now. It's just, it's, we, we moved to Escalon to kind of get away from some of that. And we've loved this community. I, you know, I don't, you know, is there, is there room for McDonald's in Escalon? Yeah, potentially, but is, is this Countrywood site ideal? And I, I can't even, you know, outside of like taxpayer revenue and, and jobs for, for high school kids, I, I can't think of anything that's going to bring a benefit to the community. When I think about what Escalon, you know, needs and what, you know, what, what's lacking is I'm, it's, it's small businesses, it's, it's restaurants that you can, you know, go to, you know, go to with your family and sit down at. It's, you know, it's, it's recreational fields for kids, right? There's a lot of these other needs in Escalon, and I get that this site has been zoned commercially for, you know, 19 years or, you know, what, what, you know, this is the first offer that, you know, has come for the city. So I, I get that as the planning commission, you guys have to do your due diligence, but I would just ask you guys to, to really just consider everybody that's expressed their concern and and those that, that haven't been able to come up and attend in the community, but it's, yeah, it's just, I think that there's just, you know, we, you know, there's other what-if scenarios that could happen and I guess we'll cross that bridge, we'll be get to it. But when it comes to the case of the McDonald's with the traffic, the concern, the, the trains that are going to come by, you know, 12 times a day and add to that traffic, it's just, it, it's, it's not going to be good for our community, for our neighborhood. And, you know, to me, it's not what, it's not, it's not what we moved to Escalon for. And it's not what I thought Escalon was about, so. Just wanted to share my, my two cents there and appreciate your guys' time and yeah, I would just ask that you would explore other options.
All right, thank you, Joe. All right, anyone else online? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing at 9:36 and bring it back to the planning commission. Yes, I'm looking at you. Any thoughts?
I got a lot of thoughts. I've heard the community, the neighborhood, the concerns. And to me, I, I heard two things that are troubling. One is the speed of traffic on Countrywood. It appears you already have a problem there. So that seems to be something that maybe the city needs to look at and addressing that. The second concern is that it sounds like that the neighborhood does not want to have McDonald's out that location. Sometimes we have to be mindful that you don't know what else could happen in the future and be developed there. You know, as, the, the, our city is looking at ways to generate revenue, generate employment opportunities. You know, more convenience, we'd like to have more medical. I'm glad to hear if somebody's going to have a medical thing, you know. We're a small community because we like it and, you know, as a commission or, I, I'm pulled on, you know, the site is set vacant for a really long time. I, and, you know, is this going to set longer? You know, the state of California, our governor, our elected officials voted in something recently that if there is a vacant lot available, a developer can come in and they can put high-density residential on it. The city is pretty much restricted on what we can or cannot do to, to stop something like that coming in. And, you know, do you guys really want, you know, a 78 or 120 unit apartment complex in that location? I mean, a couple of years ago, there was a, a development that was going to go in where behind Michael, Mike, Mountain Mikes. That was like a 200 and some odd unit development. I mean, it was incredible. There was no parking. You know, it's, I, I'm lost on where to go on this. I, I empathize with your concerns, but I'm, you know, I'll also hear people that aren't living close to this McDonald's that are really, really excited about having a McDonald's here. Would it be great if it was on McHenry? Yeah. But I mean, on 120, yeah. Stuff going west, there's no services, you know, the railroad tracks. Anything west of the railroad tracks, there's no water, there's no sewer, there's nothing out there. You know, they're trying to develop that site on Brennan in 120. You know, if that could get developed, that'd be a perfect location for a McDonald's lot, but that hasn't happened yet. That's somewhere down. That's somewhere down the future. It may or may not happen. So I like some of the recommendations, you know, that we're looking at, you know, trying to mitigate some of the problems with, you know, the lighting with the neighbors across on the opposite side of Country Wood. I like that. I like the idea that they're willing to put a three block wall separating their development and the vacant lot. You know, I just heard that they're willing to remove one of the two lanes to order food, you know, accommodate. They've already reduced the lot size. I mean, they're, they're trying to work with the community. And I'm trying to figure out how we can get the neighbors to say, yeah, okay, that's not bad if they do this. You know, we're, you know, it's, everything's a compromise. You know, one side doesn't always get everything. It's, you got to compromise, you know. And I like your suggestion about, you know, making it a one-way, you know, onto that. So I'm, I'm almost of the opinion that is if we could get some recommendations from the engineer on the traffic study on widening the ingress and egress off McHenry about some, some way to, I'll call it traffic calming down Country Wood, you know, look at, you know, maybe put some signage with no trucks are allowed, you know, past this certain point on Country Wood, no parking, you know, trying to accommodate as much. And I'm kind of concerned, listening to the audience, O'Reilly is blocking a road backing up. And that does not sound like a good situation. And, and, you know, what McDonald's is proposing is they're going to drive straight on in. So, you know, I would propose, you know, I'm just concerned about not making a motion and we sitting here until March before we can make any decisions. And, you know, we're right back where we are right now, you know.
All right. Commissioner Engel.
Appreciate your comments. I appreciate what everybody here has said. We've listened to everybody. There's, there's lots of great points. I understand the concern. I hear that. I wouldn't personally want to live across the street from McDonald's myself. I hear that. I understand the neighborhood issue. But what I'm sitting here to do as a planning commissioner is listen to a commercial development trying to go into a commercially zoned property. And what I hear is that the potential client there that wants to build in that area is, is willing to make concessions or to look at alternatives. So for that reason, I don't, I don't want to just shut the door. And I know I won't be in the next meeting, but I think it, not a big fan of the public or the workshop. I think that's just, would turn into this, hours and hours and hours of back and forth, right? I think that McDonald's and their engineer architect has heard a lot of these concerns. And it's my belief that we should continue this to the next meeting where it's feasible and let them have a shot at addressing those concerns. And it can come back again and let them say, hey, we heard your issues. We've addressed them in this way. At least that gives them an opportunity and it gives you guys also an opportunity as residents in those neighborhoods to hear what they have to say. Maybe they have some brilliant new idea after listening to all this. Good luck listening back to that, folks. But that, that's going to be mine. And Barb, if you don't want to, or if you have a comment, I'll, I'll hold off on my motion.
I'll just see. I, the chair asked, well, we didn't poll the group, but after the, the possibility of a workshop was brought up and Deanna expressed concern about would there be people in favor or just people against? And several people got up and reiterated that they're against. And my concern would be that we would get the same people against, we wouldn't get any people for, we wouldn't be able to iron out any of the issues. And I still have, like under site design, number one, number four, five, six, 10 and 11, I have problems with. And I'm not sure that they get ironed out. And I realize that the McDonald's has already put money into this, but I'm not sure I want them to put more into it or put more time into it because I'm not sure the outcome is going to be any different. So go ahead with your motion.
Actually, before you make the motion, I want to share a couple of thoughts. So first of all, I appreciate everybody taking the time and coming tonight because this is, this is what we need, this, this kind of feedback. As Commissioner Castellanos mentioned, along 120, that may or may not be developed later on down the line, but there's no infrastructure. So when I was going through this scenario, I was thinking of different sites, different viable sites. And it was brought to my attention, well, what about the, I'm just speaking generally for different sites. So I, it was brought to my attention, well, what about between Ace and the Ford dealership? Well, there's development that's planned for that area later on this year. So that site's not available. What, it was brought up earlier in this meeting, well, what about over by Taco Bell and Burger King? And then we would have the exact same problem that we're faced with right now with the residents along San Miguel and La Mesa. They would come to us and say, we don't want that. And let's go down 120 and talk about across from Hula's or the Bonnies. Then we would have Tony, the owner of Hula's, coming and saying, now you're impacting my business. And then we'd have the residents of Elizabeth in California saying, no, we don't want it there. So it's like it keeps going on and on and on, but yet at the same time, we have other residents saying, no, we really want a McDonald's here. We just don't want it in our backyard. Where does that stop? And that's my concern. And I would like to clarify a comment that I made earlier and Commissioner Castellanos touched on it briefly. I'm not saying that this is the end all be all. That's not my position, that's not my decision to make as a planning commission, planning commissioner. My concern is that there are, and as Commissioner Castellanos touched on, there are extreme amounts of pressure by the state of California to develop housing, low income housing. And we know how people feel about low income housing in Escalon. Staff, can we stick to the agenda, please?
It's because the comment was sort of made about the low income housing previously in the commissioner comments. I think, you know, it's, it's okay to briefly touch on that. But yes, again, we, I think the key thing here for the community to know is, no, this is the only plan currently for this lot. So we, it's not, this is not speculation in terms of what is going on that lot. So I think, I think that point has been made, so.
Okay. I'm just worried that something is going to happen that it will never come before the planning commission or go before the city council. And that's the state of California coming in. That's my concern. And that's where I struggle. So those are my comments. Okay, let's bring it back. Commissioner Engel, you had a motion?
Yeah, I'd like the motion to continue to, is there a recommendation by staff?
Probably a date uncertain. We would have to renotice in the newspaper, which I know is a pain. But if we move it to a date certain, we don't have to renotice. But it seems like with the flux of what's going to happen with the makeup of the commission, it would probably be better to move it to a date uncertain. So we would just renotice it. Does that seem like?
You can renotice.
Hey, we have a motion on the table. Any seconds? Okay. That motion did not, is, fails. Any other motions?
I make a motion that we deny the site and architecture and conditional use permit application subject to the conditions that I mentioned, one, four, five, six, 10 and 11, not being met.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Hearing no second, that motion fails.
Just one clarification, if we, if we sort of come all the way around, if you'd like to remake your motion and see if it fares any better or vice versa, you know, you can always remake a motion even if it's failed. Just putting that on the, on the table for you.
Sure, we got a couple of other folks down there who'd like to make a question.
From the attorney. Is it, I know you discussed this before, is it better to postpone it to a future date or make a motion with subject to the engineering approving certain items?
At this point, I think there are enough moving parts and things that would require McDonald's to really sign off. Like for example, if you were going to potentially add a condition relating to a speed bump and that maybe not, but if that's the type of thing, or like the gate versus a one-way, right? It's, it's in flux enough that I think probably at this point, we would want to continue so that we can suss out those conditions.
As, let me, can I ask a question?
Sure.
As the chair, am I allowed to make a motion?
Of course.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion that McDonald's and their design team, and maybe this is what you were saying, Commissioner Engel, I'm sorry if I'm repeating it, but my motion is that for McDonald's to, so to table this meeting, McDonald's go back and really take everything that you heard to heart tonight. And I mean, everything. And postpone this meeting and bring it back to the commission once all of these comments have been addressed. Now, with that motion, I don't want to waste anybody's time, but I think what we need from our community is to think about this open, with an open mind and, and see what they're willing to do. And if it still doesn't work and it comes before the planning commission again and it still doesn't work and you say, sorry, we gave you a chance, didn't work, then we've done our due diligence. But, so my motion is for, to table this, for McDonald's to go back, look at the orientation of the building, look at the driveway entrances, look at everything that was brought up at this meeting and for it to be brought up at a future planning commission meeting once all those comments have been addressed.
So if, from a technical standpoint, so we make sure we get it in the record correctly? I think, correct me if I'm wrong, your motion is to continue this item to a date uncertain, we would renotice it for a future meeting with guidance to the applicant to really consider everything that they've heard at this meeting, the last meeting, and come back with that in mind?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll select them out.
All right. So we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No. Motion passes three to one. So.
One absent.
With, yeah, with Mark abstaining. All right. So what do we do about the next item?
So I think that that will just proceed as planned unless, is the applicant here for this one? Is it the same? Okay, so.
Different applicant.
Different.
They are here.
Would the applicant like to table this item, go forward with this item?
Yes, Chairman, members of the Commission, Dave Romano, on behalf of the map, the same condition would be fine. We'll just wait, deal with the site plan, and then once you guys get that worked out, if that's approved, our map will be consistent with that approval. So we're fine with a continuance on the map.
Thank you very much. So we would be looking for a motion to continue tied to the item that goes with it.
All right. Next item is matters presented from the audience.
Sorry, Chair, I should have been clear. We need the motion and the second and the vote on that, to continue the item.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the table to postpone application 22-772 tentative parcel map minor subdivision?
We need to open and close the public hearing for that or we can just move?
If you're just going to continue it, you can continue it.
Mm-hmm. We have a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion to continue to a unspecified date.
Hey, we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes 4-0 with one abstention.
And with that, I think we are done and you can go ahead and close. Oh, I'm sorry, you have staff communications. Yes, sorry. Go ahead.
All right. Should we do, do we need to cover matters presented from the audience?
If anyone has a non-agenda item they'd like to speak on?
Okay, great. Then, nope, you're good.
Check online, just in case.
Is there anyone online? Was Marc on there?
No, he went home after because we moved up the other two items.
Is there anyone on the phone that has any matters that they'd like to bring up to the planning commission that is not on the agenda? Go ahead.
Hearing none. Staff communications.
I have none. Okay. As we discussed previously, we'll have a changing of the council on Monday night, which will open up two planning commission spots as well as a recreation commission spot. We are tentatively scheduling applications for, for either the last week in December or the first week in January. And we'll be running that for a 30-day period. It'll be posted in the newspaper, it'll be posted on our website, and it will, it will be at the counter as well. And so, once we gather those applications, the council that adopted policies regarding appointment, and so they will be given to city council, and we will be conducting interviews of those applicants. And then at that point, the council can move forward with appointments for, for all of those positions. We are in December, and so we're having holidays in a few weeks and it's really hard to, to grasp with the years have gone by way too quickly. So potentially for some of you, I won't see you till next year. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays and Happy New Year. I'm trying to think of any updates project-wise. You see Orlando's is moving forward, Lear Village is moving forward. Trying to think of any other thing that we've got. You had indicated the property over here on McHenry next to the Ace Hardware. They are currently completing their improvements. You may recall, they came to planning commission about two years ago and got an extension on their map. They are completing final map improvements. And they're essentially subdividing that property into three parcels. And so it sounds like there may be two commercial lots that may come available in the future if he, if he doesn't already have people potentially purchasing them. Those, those may go up for sale, they may not. We have no idea if anything's confirmed on those two lots. But you do see that they're doing the work there and it does appear that he's going to be moving forward with that RV storage, but storage location. And so is that?
Is or he is not?
He is. That's what it, that's, that's the word we have right now that he's continuing to move forward with that. So, so those are the projects we have going on in town that are, you know, private projects with city approvals. So that's all I have on my end and nothing for me.
Anything for you, Deanna?
Nothing from me. Merry Christmas, everyone. Merry Christmas.
All right. Commissioner Communications, Commissioner Engel.
I'm sure. Staff, for the 19th, for that meeting, is that just going to be, that's already in process or will there be a formal meeting to follow?
So we're trying to keep it as, as non-discussion as possible, but it will have a consent calendar for items that are routine in nature because ideally those items are usually not pooled unless there's an issue or clarification. So hopefully we'll have consent calendar and we'll move straight into approving the, current council will need to approve the election results. And then we will move into recognition of outgoing council members. Um, and then we will move into recognition of outgoing council members. And then we'll move into administering oath of office of new council members. Um, we also have a series of, um, committees that council members typically participate in. Uh, I'm going to try my best to have that ready for Monday night. In the event that it's not, we would address that in our, in our meeting in January. And so it just depends if we're able to get that on there in time. But we are trying to keep it as short as possible so that it's more ceremonial than anything, where you can bring your family and friends, um, you take pictures, that type of thing.
What about Almond Grove?
Almond Grove, that's correct. They did file an appeal on the planning commission's decision. They were scheduled for the December 19th meeting, however, pending the election results. Um, in ceremony, we have, uh, postponed their appeal until January 17th.
Oh.
And so that will be on the council, before the council at that time. The January 17th meeting, which is a Tuesday, um, because of Martin Luther King Memorial Day on the Monday. Um, and then also on that item, both Chair Strum and, and Commissioner Engel as council members will have to recuse themselves from that item at that time.
Thank you for answering that question.
Thank you. I forgot about that.
It's, it's been a pleasure working with you ladies in this capacity and serving on the commission. I, I appreciate your time and patience with us. It's, it's been an experience, but thank you. Appreciate you. And, uh, have the holidays. Be safe.
Anything else?
No.
Commissioner Willis?
Thank you for your work. Merry Christmas.
Short, sweet.
Yeah.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Congratulations to, uh, both of you gentlemen. It was a pleasure working with you. Uh, I know that, uh, Escalon will be in good hands, uh, the city council. I wish you all the luck. And everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Be safe.
I'm not going to ramble on. I just really wanted to say thank you to Diana and Dominique and to council for all of your help and guidance on this item. But in particular for Dominique and Diana, everything that you've done over the last six and a half years. It's really been a big, big help. I've, I have a completely different appreciation now for your, your jobs. But more importantly, I really want to thank, um, the council that sat me as a planning commissioner to begin with six and a half years ago. And I really want to especially thank Commissioner Castellanos, Commissioner Sarkozy, Commissioner Willis, Commissioner Engel and former Commissioner Danzinger for the camaraderie and the education that I received as a planning commissioner. I've definitely learned a lot and I hope to be just as successful as a city council member. So, um, and last but certainly not least, wish everybody, uh, if you celebrate Christmas, Merry Christmas. If you celebrate Hanukkah, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays. And, uh, with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 10:04.